And if we could all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So first, I'd like to say, words cannot express the grief families must be going through after the tragedy that occurred in Nashville yesterday. Our deepest sympathies go out to the victims, their families, and friends. Can we have a moment of silence out of respect and to reflect? If anyone is feeling at risk or observes someone who may need help, there are resources at our schools and in the community to assist. Please reach out to them. The public can also access this meeting via WebEx Technology. The Burlington School Committee will hear public comments in person and virtually. Meetings are also broadcast live on Burlington Cable Access TV, BCAT, and video/audio recordings are being made. The access code to the meeting today is 2332-457-3356, and the password is Tuesday. This meeting-hearing of the Burlington School Committee will be held in-person at the location provided on this notice. Members of the public are welcome to attend this in-person meeting. Please note that while an option for remote attendance and/or participation is being provided as a courtesy to the public, the meeting-hearing will not be suspended or terminated if technology problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless otherwise required by law. Members of the public with particular interest in any specific item on this agenda should make plans for in-person versus virtual attendance accordingly. If you are participating remotely, please identify yourself by typing your name on the screen in advance and verbally, once you're identified, to speak. We request you please turn on your camera, and comments and statements are limited to three minutes. We'd like to do the equity statement next. Educational equity means that every child belongs and receives whatever support he, she, they need to develop, his, her, their full academic, emotional, and social potential to learn and thrive every day. This begins with kindness and valuing the humanity of every child and individual. So the next item will be the public hearing, and then we'll get into the rest of it.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So like to, again, open the public hearing for school choice.
I move we open the public hearing for school choice.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? I'm an aye, so it's five, zero, zero.
So again, thank you, Madam Chair. As I explained at a prior meeting, this is recommendation for the 2023-2024 school year. The district would like to continue to offer limited school choice by admitting non-Burlington resident students for a maximum of 10 students in grade nine, five students in grade 10, five students in grade 11, and five students in grade 12. I think we've done that for 13 years or so now. If only the high school is participating in school choice, then the requirement for the committee is to formally continue with school choice for the high school and omit school choice for grades K through eight for the 2023-2024 school year with a public hearing vote. So your vote is actually to basically omit school choice for grades K through eight and allow school choice in the ratios that I just observed, 10 in ninth, five, five in five. So it's my recommended that you take two votes to continue with school choice for the high school during the 2023-2024 school year, again, in the numbers that I mentioned, and then to omit school choice for grades K through eight during the 2023 and 2024 school year.
Within the public hearing?
Within the public hearing. Or you can, I guess you can do that or end the public hearing if you, if there's comments about school choice.
I think, yeah, we shouldn't ask if anyone has a question. Anybody who wants to speak. School choice. Yeah, does anybody in the audience want to talk about it? Or anyone on the school committee? Okay?
Okay. I move we close the public hearing.
I'll second it. Okay, any additional discussion? Okay, all in favor? Aye. All opposed? I'm in favor, so five, zero, zero.
Now we need two motions.
Yep.
Again, you do. First motion, again, is can you continue with school choice for the high school during the 2023-2024 school year, again, with 10 spots for ninth, five for 10th, five for 11th, and five for 12th.
So moved.
Second.
Any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I'm in favor, so five, zero, zero.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The second motion is to omit school choice for grades K through eight during the 2023-2024 school year.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just out of curiosity, is there any ever desire by people to have school choice for K to eight?
I haven't had that desire because of space, and then once we accept a student into school choice, that student is ours through graduation. So if we accept even an elementary student, our middle school is, we don't really have room now, and then so it would be exacerbating a challenge in terms of space at the middle school. Our high school has room, and it's not impacting the delivery of any program.
Is there, are there inquiries by families for it?
No, I believe any family that's interested in school choice, there's typically a list at the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed who offers choice, when and where, and so I guess they would see that we only offer it in grades nine, 10, 11, 12.
All right, if that makes sense, thank you.
Okay, so we've had discussion. So we've had discussion. Anyone else have any other questions or comments? All right, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I'm in favor, so five, zero, zero. Okay, so the next item is public. Did we need two motions?
We had them.
We had them.
Oh.
Okay. Next item is public participation, and just a reminder that remote attendees can access via WebEx. Again, I would like to apologize if there was any confusion about the public participation at the special budget meeting last week. I realize there was some conflicting information posted, and again, for this participation is just a friendly reminder that comments and statements are limited to three minutes. I think what I want to do is let the robotics club go first, so please go ahead and introduce yourselves and do your presentation or... Yes, please.
We would first like to hand out our proposal, so.
Yes. Yep. Honorable members of the school committee, ladies and gentlemen, good evening. My name is Maria Margarita Perjapati, a DevilBots mentor, mother of three school-aged children, capital budget committee member, and town resident for 22 years. This year, in spite of, in spite of being very low on funds, the Burlington High School Robotics Team, also known as DevilBots 2876, made a very impressive comeback, a testament to their shared confidence in their ability to build better and more complex robot designs. Looking ahead, during their discussion on the 2024 robot build season, they texted me wondering if there were any discussions related to funding the team at last week's school budget deliberations. I am here today because I cannot answer that question. I am also here today to speak in favor of the high school robotics program. Allow me to introduce Shreya Iyer and Sanjit Krishnan to tell you more about the club, its needs, and its promise.
Hello, my name is Shreya Iyer. I'm a junior at BHS, and I'm the lead of the mechanical and electrical sub-team.
And my name is Sanjit Krishnan, a sophomore at BHS, and I'm part of the 3D modeling sub-team.
Our robotics team is part of an organization called FIRST, which aspires to inspire young people to be science and technology leaders and innovators by engaging them in exciting mentor-based programs that build STEM skills, inspire innovation, and foster well-rounded life capabilities, including self-confidence, communication, collaboration, and leadership.
The skills that we gain are very versatile and cover all aspects of STEM, including fabrication, electrical design, 3D modeling, programming, and beyond those to art, design, and marketing. The program is unique in offering real-world experiences that will be utilized in our professional careers. Our outstanding hands-on approach has stood the test of time as we are now entering our 15th season with the majority of our graduates pursuing STEM-related careers.
Currently, we have more than 40 hard-working students who dedicate hundreds of hours each year working on the season's challenge. Yet, we struggle with obtaining the proper funds to compete at the highest level.
The club has typically relied on mentors to find funds in a way that has been barely sustainable. I'm afraid that we'll likely turn to charging user fees next year if we're unable to find a reliable source of funding. We know the school's annual budget supports athletic, performing arts, and business endeavors. We believe that the town of Burlington should support this impactful STEM program as well.
Our funding needs, our funding needs are approximately $20,000 per year, details of which are in the handout we provided a couple minutes ago. We all know that Burlington's future is grounded and rooted in STEM. If you capitalize on this opportunity to sustain and grow the DevilBots while remaining cost-free to all students, you will be doing our students and community a major service. And it will also ensure that our school produces the future of STEM leaders.
We would love for the school committee to extend their unwavering support to the high school robotics program in their annual budget.
Thank you for your time, and we would like to take this opportunity to give you all a standing invitation to visit our team and see our robots in action on Wednesday from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. in the lower library at BHS. Thank you.
Thank you. That was a very well-done presentation. Anybody on the school committee who would like to ask any questions or have any comments? Ms. Monaco?
You have my complete support. You did a great job, and I think the robotics, do you call it a club?
It's a team. Team.
I think you do wonderful things, and we are very proud of you. You have my support.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Boss, actually.
I was just, I agree with Ms. Monaco, 100% behind you guys. I was hoping you could tell us what it is behind you.
Yes, we would love to. Would you like to start, or would you like? Okay, so basically, this robot is a 123-pound robot that is completely built from scratch. It's built to, I guess, sustain the game challenges of each season, which is this year balancing and also putting different game pieces and elements in different rungs. I mean, every year, we have a variety of students working on many different aspects, so we work on like mechanical, electrical, programming, CAD. I mean, I can go a little bit more into my role. I do both mechanical and electrical. And I think one of the biggest things that I learned this year was how to merge my theoretical AP physics knowledge into actual reasonable mechanical skills. This year, I learned how to use physics to calculate like torque, and it resulted in those gas springs that you see on the side, well, you might not see it, but it helps kind of raise and support the arm. This is just one example about how we take our theoretical skills learned in class and apply to like real engineering problems like these. I think this program and this club is like very helpful in showing us the real-world applications and giving us a look into the future of our careers.
So in addition, so what the robot can do is it can move around a pit as an area, and it can pinch and carry cones or ball, and it can place them on like rungs. So they will work with two other robots, and then the, and under, for under two and a half minutes, they will have to perform those. And the most people, the most robots that can line up the cones and line up the balls, they're the ones who have the highest score. So, yeah, so that's how, what this robot can do.
Thank you, thank you. And Ms. Masardo?
Yeah, again, thank you. You did a very good job speaking. Thank you. I know I asked about this last week in the, I think I was asking in the wrong section of the budget, but I'm still unclear where this might even go in the budget. I would love to fund it equivalently to an athletic team, or we had the esports, and there's funding for theater and things like that. But you have my support, obviously. I think I would just love if we could find a place for it to be in the budget.
Ms. Simon?
Likewise, I think it's marvelous. I know that the robotics team has been working for many years, and I'm delighted that there's always new students who are getting involved, and appreciate all the volunteers who have been helping and completely do support it. I am aware, and maybe this is, I should leave this to Dr. Conti, but the, the funding for various clubs and teams and such usually goes, is, is run through the schools, and so I, we'd have to figure out if it's not, like, for example, a club at the high school has an advisor who's paid by the, the budget and such. We have a whole list of stipends and things, and I'm, Dr. Conti, correct me if I'm wrong, but we don't have a stipend for the robotics club. Is that accurate?
No, we do.
Oh, we do, okay. So trying to figure out how to make it work. So there is, if there's a stipend for robotics, is that a different T-club, or is that this group?
No, it's this group.
Okay. So why don't you, maybe if you could explain a little about how it is, where we are funding it, and how we could help support them?
Through the chair, Ms. Simon, and to the team, we actually have two stipends for the robotics club, and I think we've added robotics as a course. So I think it's also open to students to take, again, as part of our program of studies, which you approved, and, and a club. I think honestly that this is looking for funding to run the team sort of outside of the, outside of the regular program, not including salary. This looks honestly like more competition expenses and equipment expenses, and so I think we can work on trying to find the resources to support the team. So the team is not without support, but it sounds like that support is insufficient for you all to compete at the level that you want. So I can, I can count votes, and another skill for you to take into your career is when your bosses sort of want something done, you sort of say, "We'll get it done." So I will, I will find the $20,000 to support the team in addition to the resources that we are already moving forward. Okay?
Thank you so much.
Great job.
Well, that worked. Thank you, thank you very much. Yeah, I'm sorry, what? Yes.
I have one question. I get the DevilBots, but where does the 2876 come from?
So 2876 is the number that we sign up when we register for FIRST. So every team has their unique number, and we were the 2,876 team to sign up. Now it's over 10,000 teams, so we were pretty early.
All right, great, great job.
Thank you, Mr. Moore, that was a good question. All right, so if you all are finished, you may go wherever you'd like to go.
Are you gonna, are we gonna see the robot leave, or is it gonna stay here till later? Okay. Great. Thank you.
All right. So at this point, I know there are more people who would like to participate in public participation. I'm going to invite Mr. Musselman up, because I think he's been waiting since last week. So if you'd like to come up next.
All right. Good evening, school committee. Sean Musselman, BEA president.
Sarah Basaki, 4th grade teacher at Panglan, and BEA vice president.
And, and thank you again for your comments earlier and the understanding and welcoming us to the table today. We stand before you to offer appreciation for this budget's commitment to a director of diversity, equity, and inclusion and other roles rooted in more equitable outcomes for the students of Burlington. In the same moment, we offer a charge to follow through on this commitment by approving and demanding full funding for this budget from this town's governing body. Our request is simple, to push forward with the approval and prioritization of hiring the many proposed educator roles designed to reverse inequitable outcomes of our historically marginalized global-majority students. To do so would surely mean pushing forward a budget that goes beyond the suggested percent increases, projections that may meet proposed town fiscal goals, but fail to meet the definition of fully-funded schools.
We recognize an easier alternative is in plain sight, to thank educators and administrators for their input, to publicly honor their commitment to our students, and then make tough fiscal decisions that would leave such roles unrealized. To indirectly decline the hires proposed by our administrators last week and tonight that explicitly focus their energy on this work will cause inequitable trends coursing through our community to persist. Mr. Musselman and I understand that we all play an important role in addressing systemic inequities, and that such work requires vision, leadership, and support at all levels within our organization. Our educators come to work every day dedicated to this work, but are too often left unsupported to fully press against such forces. Let's continue to push our community to realize its most virtuous potential as a place to learn and thrive for all. Seek the full funding and roles embedded within this budget so that our schools are not left hobbled in their pursuit of a thriving student community.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Ms. Simon?
I don't want to have a dialogue, but I want to thank you, and I want to thank all the teachers for their contributions and work, because together, we need to do this equity work and move it forward and make the systemic changes that are required so that all of our students are going to meet their highest potential, which is the goal of, I think, everyone in this room. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Simon.
Thank you.
Ms. Monaco?
That's okay. That's okay.
Just kidding.
I, I just want to thank you for your encouragement. It's, it's, it's a difficult task in this community to, to break guidelines, but I think we've already talked about how, to whatever extent we can, we know we need to this year. So it was nice that you came in publicly, kind of took some of the burden off us, because we need your support as we go to town meeting looking for the funding that we really need for this budget. We, you know, one of those things that happens is you, you put things off, and you put things off like our buildings and the high school with the so many years, and, you know, the problem isn't going away. We need the money, and we need to fix them. So thank you for being supportive of our efforts, and we'll do our very best.
Well, we will push with you, and if your generosity to the robotics club is any indication of, you know, the need to fund the diversity of programs that we have in our schools and our students' needs, we are encouraged in this moment.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Be nice if money grew on trees, right?
Steven has a tree.
Mr. Moore, did you have a question or comment? Oh, you have the money tree? He said he has the money, he has the money tree. He has the money tree. All right, I know there are other people who would like to participate, please, yep, come on up. Please state your name.
My name is ZiY. It's working now? Yes. Hi, my name is ZiY. A few parents and I were going to talk our support to Panglan nurse Alexandra Laverty tonight. I have them, there's a petition going on. I have the list of the people who signed, and I probably want to pass it around by the end of public participation if I can get it back, just so some people probably don't really want to reveal their names. My name is ZiY. I'm a town meeting member from Person 5, and I've been a Panglan mom for seven years. Recently, concern is circulating among parents and the community that a school nurse Alexandra Laverty is not going to have her contract renewed, and will lose her job at Panglan. Nurse Laverty started working at Panglan in the beginning of the pandemic, which is January 2020, I believe. She was on top of everything. The change of regulations, new policies, masks, hand hygiene, and emailing parents back and forth regarding questions and concerns, even after school hours. Her caring, focus, patience, and the communication made us feel our, our kids were safe back at school. She did great, and it kept teachers and kids safe. In addition to injuries, illness, and hygiene, Nurse Laverty has been great with kids who need extra care. From my own personal experience, she has always been on top of IHCP and 504 plan paperwork, helping kids with anxiety about their disabilities and also educating their classmates. Over the weekend, a petition supporting Nurse Laverty to continue as Panglan nurse garnered 183, I think, signatures now. Quoting from that petition, "Alex has been nothing but wonderful since she's taken over as a nurse at Panglan. She's been so kind to our kids and a welcome change for us parents. She's a single mommy in town, Army veteran, and an active member of the Army Reserves. We believe that to not fight for Alex to stay is a disservice to everyone in our Panglan community," end quote. "I understand that staffing discussions or personnel matters are confidential and private, but I would humbly request the school committee consider parents and the community's feedback in regard to Nurse Laverty's contract renewal. Nurse Laverty stuck by our kids, and we would like to stick with her. Thank you for your time."
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Melissa Interess, and I live at 11 Leroy Drive. I'm the parent of a Panglan 4th grader. I'm here tonight to bring to light concerns I have about our Panglan school nurse, Alex Laverty. It is my understanding that her contract is not being recommended for renewal. While I understand it's not our right to know all the details and what goes on behind the scenes, as a parent of a child who adores Alex, I cannot understand why this is even being considered. Alex goes above and beyond daily for her students and their parents. My daughter has food allergies, including peanuts, tree nuts, sesame, and mustard. At the beginning of the school year, Alex found that there was an allergen in the bread used in the cafeteria. She made a personal phone call to every parent of a student impacted to ensure that they were aware and make sure that the students weren't buying any item with bread that day. She then followed it up with an email. Recently, the food service provider changed. Alex sent several emails to the entire community outlining the options they would be providing, how students would order, and how to find allergen information. She attached step-by-step instructions on locating the allergen information, as it wasn't obvious how to find it on the website. These are just two examples of the thoroughness with which Alex does her job. She's also a safe and welcoming space for kids to go when they are hurt or feeling unwell. She gets to know the students as individuals and has become another trusted adult in the building for my daughter. And Alex always contacts parents when their child has been in her office that day. Alex is a kind and thoughtful human being who does her job and does it well. I don't understand why we would want to lose this at Panglan, and I ask you to please listen to all of the parents expressing their support for her and look into this issue further. You all are elected by the community and are ultimately here to ensure that the needs of students are being met through budget policy and staffing. Our Panglan students need Mrs. Laverty to remain their school nurse. She's just too good to lose. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak up. My name is Sherri Shaw from 10 Ma Street in Burlington, and my son just started Grade 1 at Panglan Elementary School. And I'm here together with the other parents to support Alex to be the school nurse for Panglan. You know, because my son just have very short history with Panglan, so I just want to share my personal experience working with Alex. So my son got a new diagnosis last year, right after starting Panglan. It was a very challenging time for me, for our entire family. It was a lot of anxiety that I need to go to doc, talk to my doctors regarding my son's diagnosis, his treatment plan, his, you know, the, the rescue medication that needs to be administered to him. And also because my husband and I, we were raised up in another country, so we have no idea what kind of support is available in the school system. So Alex is a person who talked to me, who understands my anxiety, who walked me through regarding, you know, what is available support in the system, and he also asked, she also asked me tons of questions regarding the prescription I gave it to her. The treatment plan changed a couple a couple of times for my son, and then, you know, Alex is the person who is able to try to understand exactly what is on the prescription, in which circumstances that medication should be administered, in which circumstances that she needs to call the 911. And also at the same time, she also makes sure that all of the teachers in Panglan Elementary School receive the training appropriately. So I think that's where I feel very confident, and I feel very comfortable, that my son goes to Panglan, and he will receive the care whenever he needs. So that's why, you know, I'm very sad to know that Alex may not be able to have this contract renewed. And I think it's definitely sad news for me as a parent who has gone through this challenging time. So I want to hear, you know, as mentioned earlier, I want to share my personal stories, and I think it will be a great loss for everyone in the Panglan community to lose Alex as a school nurse. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Liang, and I live at 29 Arthur Woods Avenue. I have three kids at Panglan, a fifth grader, a third grader, and a first grader. And all of my three kids, they have peanut and tree nut allergies, and they also have seasonal allergies. So, but I'm very confident to send my kids to school knowing they won't be harmed, and I know they will be safe, because Alex is always on top of their medical needs. She always reminds me of renewing our, the epipens, and to have the doctors sign the medical consent forms. She even suggested me to send the, like, the allergy eye drops to school during the allergy seasons. And she also, she also has kids with allergies, so she shares her experience with me, how she takes care of her kids with allergies. So, and whenever my kids feel uncomfortable at school, they love to go to see Alex. Alex always knows how to comfort them and how to take care of them. And they always tell me, oh, Mom, I love her. She treats her so well, so nice. So, all of us love her. And the whole Panglan community, we love her as a nurse, and we are very confident to send our kids to school. We know, like, whenever they have some problems, they will be very well taken care of. And so we strongly hope that we can keep Alex at Panglan. Thank you.
Thank you. Everybody speak who wanted to. Okay. Thank you very much. We definitely appreciate you coming in and sharing your personal stories. And Mr. Foss?
I'm going to take off my school committee hat for a second and speak as a parent. I'm also, my kids go to Panglan as well, and I would like to echo everything that was said tonight. My kids have had, and my family, we've had nothing but positive experiences with Ms. Laverty. And again, speaking as a parent, it would be a loss for the Panglan community if she were to leave. Thank you.
Ms. Monaco?
So, speaking as a grandparent, I have two at Panglan. I have one in the kindergarten and one in second grade. And they love her. That, you know, that's all I can say is they love her. So, we hear you. I wonder if Dr. Conti might explain that the person who makes these decisions is the school principal?
Ms. Monaco, hey. Ms. Monaco, you know that's the case, and you, I'm not going to comment on this matter. I know it's very personal for many people. It is actually, it's very personal for me as well. But we're trying to work through the process, and it's frustrating to hear from me that this is a personnel matter, and it, but it is. So, that's really all I can say this evening, so.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
And I know we have another group of people in the back. Christine Stevens in your group, want to come up?
Good evening. I'm Kim Davis. Oh, sorry. I'm Kim Davis from the Memorial, I'm the assistant manager. We have some concerns and frustrations, and we're all really upset, I guess you could say, on a daily basis. We're just having a lot of difficulty with this new change. It's not a matter of, yes, we agree we need new, you know, some updated food quality, some fresh fruit, some fresh, but what's coming into us is just hours of work for minimal, you know, example, burritos today. They were, oh, let's have these great burritos. Nobody ate them. They took them. We watched them throw them in the trash. You know, there's too many options. We're throwing food out because we're getting so much of it that it's rotting. Or the kids will look at him and go, oh, that, I don't want that. Well, or I'll take it. I'll try it. It's free. Well, if I don't like it, I'll just throw it out. We're wasting, you know, we have to put things in packages because it, oh, well, that's what we have to put in a plastic container. So we have to throw it, pull a plastic container, throw it a plastic container. Oh, well, it has to be in this container, that container, plastic bag. We're wasting food. We're wasting product. We're wasting, the time that's taking us to do all this stuff is multiple hours. You know, I'm there almost every day after my regular time. We've got staff coming in two hours early. We've got staff coming an hour and a half early, and we're still not accomplishing it. And it's just, it's very frustrating. I have some notes from the manager at, thank you, Frances Wyman-Paula. And, you know, her pros, yes, with this fresh fruit, a variety of menu, multiple options. The cons, we're wasting food. We're not, we can't, we can't even get through preparing enough food to serve to the kids. So then you get, you go, wait, sorry, I have to prepare more of it because, you know, they changed their mind. Well, we can't change kids from changing their mind, but the components, there's so many components. And then they're not eating it. It took, I had to go with me today, to make 60 burritos, it took me three hours by the time all the food was prepared in order to assemble this burrito. We had salads today. We're not getting enough product from the company, Whitson's, thank you, from the company. Like, we needed, I'm just speaking on my, today, and it was, we needed two cases of lettuce. I had one case of lettuce. You know, then we had to figure out, oh, well, do we have another bag, a different kind of lettuce? Can we, you know, and it's like, oh, well, and then 60 of them. Oh, well, I changed my mind. Well, it takes us all this hours to prepare all this food, and then they're changing their mind, and then we're throwing it out. Or I don't like it. Can I have something else? Well, we can only have one lunch. You can have more fruits and vegetables. It's just constantly changing, food going outdoor. You know, they're, you know, at the beginning, you know, I understand we're in that, we're still finishing the last week of the propose, the, what is it called? The
Bin menu.
Bid menu. And, you know, it's the bid menu, and, oh, we have to go by the bid menu. The district decided on the bid menu. Who decided on the bid menu? We still haven't figured out who set this menu, because, I mean, if you, you guys can look at the menu online. It's just product after product after product after product. You know, it's like four different vegetables. You can't, you know, and I don't mind fruits and vegetables, but you give too many options, these kids are just, they don't take it because they get confused. And then by the time they get through the line, because they have to pick, oh, do I want that, that, and that, they have five minutes left in their lunch. Now, I mean, sometimes it's a, it's a big lunch, and it takes, you know, there's a lot of kids ordering. But if you're not having a lot of kids order, they shouldn't have to take five minutes to eat their lunch, because it took too long to get through the line because nobody could decide what they wanted, or they changed their mind, or we had to stop to prepare more food. Ladies?
Did you read that whole thing? She had some good points.
The last lunch, kids aren't getting it done because we have to make more. She had, when we started this menu, she had, she said, I had five cases of Big Daddy's pizza. Now she's got 12 cases of Big Daddy's pizza. Well, you know, I don't know how many she needs in a week, but there's just, they overwhelmed us to the point where I walked in one day, and I couldn't open the freezer door because there was so much food in there, and I didn't know what was in there. And then someone says, oh, well, do you have this? I don't know, because I don't know what they delivered, because all of a sudden, this food just showed up. I mean, I understand we may need, you know, we're going to go back to some ordering, but we don't even know half the time what's, what we need to order, because some of the food is, I don't know, strange, I guess, different. It's different. It's different vendors. We can't, you know, I, yeah, there's a little learning curve on that, but it's just, there's so much waste. There's so much, there's so much stuff that you, it has to be, there's no streamline. There's no, you know, it's just like, and they're not, like, again, the burritos. You know, okay, you want to have a burrito, but some of the stuff in this burrito, kids just turn their nose up at it. You know, it's like, okay, you want to offer a burrito? Let's think. What type of burrito would these kids eat? Not, oh, well, this, this is what's on the bid menu. Oh, this is what we cook at Whitson's. And it's not all necessarily the company, but it's the execution, the, I don't know what's how it's.
Everything has to go into plastic containers.
Right.
Yeah. You would not believe, hundreds of plastic containers each building uses each day, and I'm sure the high school and middle school use even more. It's terrible. And we don't, we just don't have the time.
I'm just staffed.
I think like she said, the staff's exhausted. I've got somebody now, I've had my help. Now, my, one of my part timers is tired of coming in early. She's going back to her own hours, and now we're going to be in trouble. So I don't know what we're going to do, because we can't get anybody, but.
I mean, it's, it's.
I think everybody needs to say something.
Can I, I'd like to say something, please.
Move, oh.
Sorry. My name's Chris. I'm manager at Panglan. My issue is with this company. They do not want to listen to nothing we have to say.
Agreed.
I have tried to talk to Katrina several different times, and she walks out of my office ignoring what I'm trying to say to her. And I'm getting tired of it, to the point where I'm going to put in my papers to retire. I know you guys probably don't care, but.
We do care.
Well, nobody wants to listen to us.
Right.
Nobody wants to go back and say anything to her.
I think she's the hottest one to deal with. The company, the chefs have been really good. The chefs have come out, and they really try to work with us. I think what happened with this company, they sold everybody, the parents, the school committee. They make it eye appealing, everything else.
And it is. It is eye appealing. I'm not going to deny that.
The problem is, when they came in, they took complete charge over our refrigerators, our store, our stock rooms and everything. And we have no clue where our product is. So how can we produce the product for them and help them put across this menu without any communication of our refrigerators, our freezers? We don't know. They changed all the system around. The chefs, I do not want to fathom of the chefs, because I think the chefs have been awesome. They've been really, Katrina is just no communication at all.
Nope. She does not want to communicate with none of us.
She's not, she doesn't, she's not a team player.
That's a perfect example.
She's just not a team player. So I think we all don't hate the company. We hate some of the people that's running the company, and we see there is a lot, she ordered, over ordered the first two weeks. We couldn't eat, none of us could get into our refrigerators, freezers, or anything. Then it was complete under audit the following week. It's just all over the board, so we don't understand what's going on with that. We've already been shot staffed since COVID. We still are shot staffed. We're asked to produce a lot more different varieties under our shot staff status. And the dishes is overwhelming. I know these things don't seem important, but they're a function that has to get done during the day. It's not, we can stay active to 2:30 to finish up all the dishes. The tables still have to be addressed. So food is one thing, and preparing the food, but there is other jobs that still involved in the cafeteria back scene, the little back doors that go on, that it might not seem important, but it's a huge function. And I think the whole, everybody's stressed to the gills.
And exhausted.
And exhausted. So it's not that we don't want to work with the company, it's that we're totally understaffed. We have no control. If we'll get it back, I feel like we, they threw it all at us, dumped everything, and now it's our job to clean up our refrigerators, our freezers, and put everything back into some type of order. We are, it would have been nice if we worked as a team and all communicated together, and really kind of focused on what would make sense where we're putting that product, so we could work in getting it out and making it happen, but that's never happened. So I think that's why we're all here, because it's been so frustrating of a kind of a takeover, not by the chefs, by the company, that didn't kind of respect us as human beings, too, that we've worked in the system for quite a few years. A lot of us have put in 24 years or more. So it's not like we just come off, you know, we have been in the system. We can, we stayed in the system. We've seen many changes through time. It's not that we don't want the kids to have different options and more fruits and vegetables or any of that. It's just the lack of.
Communication.
Company not really trying to work with us.
Everybody is just exhausted. It cannot go on. It just can't. Everybody.
We need more help.
Girls crying every single day in every building.
Yep.
Whether anybody believes me or not.
The job is just not fun and enjoyable.
Everybody's got issues.
I feel like we used to be a family, and we're just.
It's terrible. It's a terrible way to go to work.
We're all thrown to the wolves.
Yeah, yeah.
And I just, I got to say something. I should not say it, but any person, any one of us, could have sat in Karen DiMaso's chair. If you had given us the opportunity and said, spend the money, buy all the fresh fruits, buy all the fresh vegetables, we could have done what they're doing.
Because they use the same.
This is ridiculous. It really is.
The kids think they're getting different pizza, but it's Big Daddy's. It's the same pizza.
Somebody said, oh, my God, the pizza looks so good. I've been had that for years. With everything.
And they come in at night and take all our stuff out of the freezer and get rid of it.
Yeah, it was, we threw out tons. I mean, there is so much, you can't, we got so much produce and that you could never, never get. Just a complete waste of money.
All the produce.
So I don't know. We live in Burlington, where tax pay is, so.
And the taxes are going to go up.
You know, that kind of bothers us.
I do want to say, the chefs are real, they are great. They are great. They're trying and trying, but I don't, they're just not for Burlington. That's our opinion. So.
It's, I'm Jean Huntun. Hi. I've lived here over 40-odd years. I've had three kids go through school. The basis is here. You cannot make, you made a food court. I don't go to Starbucks. When I go up to Starbucks and order for a smoothie, there's one person making a smoothie. I got five minutes. I'm standing here. These kids don't have five minutes. We have a line that has to get through. Then we have the teachers yelling us. They only have 10 minutes to eat. You have to, can you get this through? They have cards. They can't even get through their, I've worked on a register because someone is out. I would have took this, and I would have brought all of yous right there and said, here, get these cards through here. I go to a grocery store, and when my card doesn't go through after two times, and the guy says to me, oh, it's your card. I said, no, it just worked in 15 stores. Don't tell me it's my card when it's not working here. It's your system. And it's a lot of money to spend on this system. I realize this, because my daughter runs a company. It's a lot of money to upgrade these systems. I think they're total ridiculous, but I know these kids standing, and I'm not talking high school. I'm in a, five years old. They're scanning the card. I'm ready to take the card. And I put the card, and it don't go through. I'm ready to say, machine, you're through. I got you. I'll go tell the state. And we had an incident today, because the kid, the kid stood there, and I'll tell you, took a lunch. I asked, he said to me, the four boys were kibitzin'. The one kid had his hand around the neck. I walked out and said, we don't put hands on anybody else. We keep them to the side. The other friend said, oh, no, that doesn't go, and that saying doesn't go anymore. I said, well, it goes right here now. I'm not going to, so then I walked back, and I said to the kids, they all ordered burritos, and I said to them, and I said to them, will you please tell me how you like these burritos? Give us your feedback. The kids said, oh yeah, we will. The kid took his lunch, dropped it, threw it away, walked over to the other side where the other person was serving, and said, I dropped my lunch and you have to give me another chicken Caesar salad. We said, we can't, you didn't, and then I turned around and I said, you didn't order the chicken Caesar salad, you ordered a burrito. No, I didn't, I ordered the chicken Caesar salad. So Kim came in and said, well, we can give you a bagel. I don't want the bagel, you owe me a chicken Caesar salad. Not two minutes later, the principal's coming down telling us, we got to give her, give a chicken Caesar salad, just give it to me, I don't care where you charge it to. And that was my thing. I said, we were on a losing paddle, because no matter what, the parents are going to say, this kid needs a lunch. My kid deserves a chicken Caesar salad, because the father called the principal. So who won? The kid won. And I'm not saying that's right or wrong, it's just that it was, and we didn't have enough salad, because I got to know that tomorrow, I got to make more chicken Caesar salad. Now Chris says, oh, but they're promising, it's on the truck. I said, Christmas will come before that chicken salad come. I just, that's what I said with the tables, oh, we're getting somebody. Well, when are we getting, we've been fighting this, you've heard me from September, I've called most of yous, please have us get somebody for tables. I said to my coworker, we're getting help. We are? I said, no. I said, actually, the Red Sox will win the championship again, maybe we have hope for that, but this is, I mean, it's so frustrating, because it seems like nobody's backing. And dishes, 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 dishes. We were there till almost 2 o'clock yesterday. Now, if I had to go home and take care of somebody, I would have to say, I have to leave now. Chris said, because I'm the one that's cutting my hours, I can't do it. So she says to me, well, you leave at 1 o'clock. I said, how can I, in my thing, say, there's work here and I'm going to leave? She says, you're just going to have to leave. I said, well, to make an issue? Yes, I will. Good luck, Kim, good luck on cleaning this, you might be there till 3 o'clock, maybe till Christmas, so.
The work is just doubled. We're telling you to leave, because we don't want you to put in any more hours than you want to, you don't want to do more than that.
But, I mean.
You need to come in and leave.
It's just that we really need to address the company.
Everybody's just wiped out.
Wiped out.
Just can't do this.
On paper, it looks great. And I'm not saying that some of the options are not great options, because they're changing things up, but they're using similar products. They're using chicken, oh, well, you know, let's do it this way. The other day, we did chicken with mashed potatoes and corn and gravy, not bad, because that was something that, they've ate all those things, we just put it together in a different way. But, you know, like, and then you, as, as a parent, I want these parents to realize, you're saying to your kid, oh yeah, you can go, go buy lunch. They have one thing on their plate, I think you should take something else. No, I don't want it.
No, I don't want, no.
But you as, you, I'm just, in general, as a parent, you're, you know, people who have kids in the school, you believe that your kids are taking the food, and you're like, oh, it's a great option, you got all this great, they're not taking it.
Can't change.
You can't change a kid who's just going to the line and take their one thing.
All right, thank you all. So I, you know, I don't know if anyone in, as far as the school committee wants to make any comments. I know that I've been pressing to get a liaison between you all and the, you know, Whitsons. So at this point, I don't know if any other school committee members want to make a comment, Ms. Masardo?
So can you just, I met half of you, but there's a couple of you that I don't know if you wouldn't mind just going through and saying your school for me?
I'm at Pine Glen.
Sorry.
Chris at Pine Glen.
Okay.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Sarah Murray, I'm from Francis Wyman.
Okay, Shirley, I know.
Yep.
I'm Jean Huntun.
Yep, Chris.
I'm Marion Coyne, I'm at the high school, I'm the manager at the high school.
Okay, we met too. I know we posted some new positions, so I think, yes, well, I would love to help in that.
That's not, that's not, or anybody else knows.
But the other thing is, I do think it's important that we get someone, a middleman between, I think we have, the interim director of food services is supposed to be liaison, but I'm very disappointed if we, if our, then this is the benefit of using a vendor, if we're unhappy, we need to be able to go back and ask for a different person.
Carrie tries, Carrie tries so hard, but they just push right back against her.
They're not talking to her either.
They're still doing half of the job now, she's running around to schools bringing food, and she's.
It's not her, they don't talk to her, that, what's her name?
They don't talk to her either.
Katrina, she is, doesn't talk, the other issue that I also think, we used, it's, the concept is eye appealing, let's please the parents, let's sell it to the town, let's do all of this, but the other thing too is, we all took safe serve, there's some issues that grab and go versus serve your child. If your temperature is not being held at a certain temperature, and you have it out all over the place, and it's just because it needs to be grabbed and go, it's still not, so the parents realize that it's not warm, or that some of the things that they're going to get is not going to be at the right temperature, because it's trying to be fast and trying to be, look pretty, but not so much the temperatures. So we are putting, at the high school, we've gone from metal wells, containers that we put in our heated wells, to sometimes putting plastic. Now, I don't know how good heated plastic with food is and how safe that is, because we've gone through many times and many different years over the course, from stryopon to plastic to whatever, metal does hold heat better, it seems to be more reliable, safe-wise. So some of these things, the black is pretty, it looks nice, it's eye appealing, but how safe and how proper is black plastic in a heated well with the heat coming up underneath? Some, and how well is it that you're pushing out all this product and putting it all out in front for them to grab and go, but not having it in the heated situation where I'm serving it, it is hot for the kid? That's a little bit of my other concern too, that I see going on, you know, they mentioned having, at the high school level, everybody take a spat, you know, a spatula and taking a slice of pizza off a circle thing, and I'm saying, how many kids are going to take that spatula, and maybe the pizza's not perfectly, might touch the other pizza, and they might have to put their hand there to grab that piece? Is that really a sensible situation, or, you know, they've mentioned this stuff, it hasn't happened, but it, to me, it brings red flags, because that's not, if we had the food director come in and check us, would we be called out on that? Would that be really, you know, we've been in the system long enough to be, been told some of this stuff, and we've taken safe serve tests ourself, so we get lots of chefs telling us different things, and like I said, they're all good, but everybody seems to do a little something different in their situations too. And I think the biggest thing with that company is to make it look really attractive, eye appealing, but are we really always being safe with what we're pushing out? Versus grab and go versus serving.
They're concerned with the presentation, everything has to be in a plastic container with a label on it.
So I'm going to let Ms. Simon, I, I know there's a lot to talk about, and I think maybe what we need to do is continue this at another time, because we have to get our meeting going, but I'd want to let Ms. Simon make a comment.
I just want to acknowledge all the frustration and exhaustion that you're expressing. It sounds like some of these issues are longer term than from before Whitsons, but many are about the, the new management, and I do hope that there'll be more conversation, so that your concerns and your experience can be used as we move forward to make, there's, you know, a number of factors that, that need to be looked at, and it can't all just be changed, you know, overnight kind of thing. Thank you.
We appreciate you guys listening.
No, thank you, thank you for coming in and sharing. Anyone else comments? All good? Thank you very much.
Thank you for the time we took.
Is there anybody else in the audience for public participation? Okay, so we will move on to the next item, which is information and reports, Dr. Conti.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have the distinct honor and privilege to be Matt Channon this evening. So Matt has a, had a volleyball game, so he wrote his comments, and then he asked me to, to read his comments. So with your permission, this is the student report from, from, from Matt. So Matt said, lots happened over the last couple of weeks. I recently met with BHS art teacher Christina Chang, and she wanted me to share a few updates about artists within the school. The art club hosted an art contest this year. The theme was, what does it mean to be a responsible member of a diverse community? Freshman Afsa Khalifa won the first place award for her artwork. Here is her description of her art, and this is a quote. This piece shows what it means to be a responsible member of a diverse community by accepting all kinds of differences through a diverse friend group. The piece includes people of different sexual orientations, ethnicities, and race. This piece also includes someone with type 1 diabetes. The friend group in the artwork is eating foods from different parts of the world, with different activities and flags on the different foods, activities, identities, that are all different, yet similar, people may enjoy showing diversity, and that's an end quote, and the artwork is behind me, if you want to take a look at it, so. Mrs. Chang also wanted me to discuss some activity from the Students for Cultural Awareness Club. The 10th grade students read the book, When the Emperor Was Divine. This book is a historical fiction novel written by American author Julie Atsuka, about a Japanese-American family sent to an internment camp in the Utah desert during World War II. The Students for Asian Cultural Awareness arranged for a guest speaker, David Sakara, who was interned as a six-year-old boy. He spoke to all of the 10th grade students about his experience. He started the talk by stating to the students, you read the book When the Emperor Was Divine, and that was a fiction story, but the story that I am going to share is my personal story and history, and happened to me. The students wrote letters to David stating, thank you for your courage and openness to share what can only be a traumatizing event. Your story was very moving and incredibly saddening to look upon our dark history of racial hatred of the United States. It is very concerning to think that an event like this could happen in the land of the free. The Students for Asian Cultural Awareness spent the day together with David, after David's talk, they wrote letters to David Sakara and letters to their teachers, asking for more Asian-American curriculum. They also wrote poetry and created art. I heard great reviews from his guest appearance as well, sort of, that's my insertion, sorry, Matt. Now continuing with Matt's words. In other news, DECA competed at states, it was really fun and enjoyable meeting new members from across the state. We had many finalists in events, and state champions in event role-playing and projects who are moving on to international completion, including Megan Ahol, Tommy Gallagher, and Emma Nadoff, Ava and Ally Restivo, Connor Herrera, Vivian Pandey, and myself. So congratulations to Matt. At both the middle school and high school, students competing in National, are competing in National History Day, essentially the science fair for history projects, and they found great success. The three high school projects competing in the senior division all won medals and moved on. That is Ania Sorolser, Chloe Kivambi won bronze with an exhibit on DNA, Leila Ahmed won silver for her paper on Dr. Anna Cooper, and Emerson Waynsner, Julia Schwartzman, and myself won gold with a documentary on chemotherapy. So again, congratulations to all the students, including Matt. Many middle school students saw success in the junior division. Winners are moving on to the state competition April 1st. And then Matthew wants to, he concludes his comments by making sure that the school committee recognizes that Dr. Conti is just doing an incredible job as superintendent, no, no, he didn't, sorry, no, he didn't, he didn't write that, so.
We agree with him.
It's been a very eventful couple of weeks, especially as spring sports start up. So again, I want to thank Matt for taking the time to write his comments and all of the student successes that he's highlighting, and some of these groups will try to come back to the committee. I know that National History Day students have come before the committee, and you've all enjoyed that. I think the DECA students will be back. We have the tenacity challenge that is underway, so the robotics team, so there's lots of events that are, that are upcoming, and again, that is the student report for this meeting.
Thank you, substitute Matt. All right, the next item is subcommittee reports? Anybody? Okay. And how about Ways and Means, Mr. Warren?
So Ways and Means, we're starting to look at the local education budgets, Burlington's budget and also Shawsheen's. We have a subcommittee meeting with the school subcommittee for finance next Thursday, 4/6, and then we have one right before the regular Ways and Means meeting on 4/12, to finalize and to vote on the budget. So we're looking forward to meeting with the superintendent and Nicole and others to ask our questions. I've started reviewing the budget, I'm 25% of the way through, I'll be complete by the weekend, and I've been emailing Nicole with a couple of the questions that I have.
Thank you very much for your update on what's going on. Anyone have any questions for him? All right, excellent. So we can move on to any other announcements anyone would like to make, Ms. Simon?
I just wanted to point out something going on at the library. I'm sure everyone in Burlington knows what an amazing job they do with their resources and their programs and their services, and I noticed a couple of weeks ago, they now have digitized the Burlington High School yearbooks. So if you want to go back and look at the old yearbooks, I believe they're now digitized, I think that means you can access them online, but you'll have to check with the librarians. But I just wanted to point that out as something that's really cool going on in the Burlington Library.
Thank you, Ms. Simon. Anyone else? Okay, the next item is learning equity and thriving, Dr. Conti.
Thank you, Madam Chair. With your permission, may I just jump up the last item, because I'm just too excited and I can't wait to get through the other, the other agenda items.
That's fine with me.
I think starting the learning equity and thriving conversation by introducing Dr. Lisa Chen to this committee officially and to the community is a great way to start this part of the agenda. So again, Dr. Chen is joining us from Louisa County of Virginia. She's here remotely, she has also been here in person, and many of you had the pleasure to, to meet Dr. Chen. Again, she's held many prior experiences in education, and including superintendent, which is, I'm going to be learning a tremendous amount from, from Dr. Chen, and she's worked in Massachusetts, as well as doing her graduate work at Boston College, so she's also very familiar with, with Massachusetts. And again, I don't think any learning equity and thriving conversation would be complete without introducing Dr. Chen and welcoming, welcoming her to Burlington, and looking forward to, again, learning from her and collaborating as we move forward. So Dr. Chen, thank you for taking time this evening and for, and for being a part of our meeting here in Burlington.
Thank you. I have to say, it was a pleasure meeting you when we did the walkthrough at the high school, and I really look forward to getting to know you better and working with you. So thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Everyone good?
Go Eagles.
All righty, and Ms. Monica?
It was great meeting you, we look forward to having you onboard.
Did you want to have any comments or make any comments?
I didn't know if I could speak, so I was just waiting, but I just wanted to say thank you so much, and now I've learned that your high school has a secret swimming pool. I think I found the secret swimming pool.
Good luck finding it.
No, but I just wanted to say that it is actually my distinct pleasure to be a part of your community, and I'm just so grateful that you guys have considered me, and I will be the one who will be learning from Dr. Conti and all of you guys, and you do have such a wonderful community, and I love the fact that there's such great diversity of opinion, and that folks feel comfortable with expressing themselves, and I just, this has been a fantastic school committee meeting, I thoroughly, really enjoyed it, and so thank you for letting me be a part of it, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moved to town, or somewhere near. All right, anybody else? All right. We can go on to, did you want to go to the, which, where do you want to go next, Dr. Conti?
Let's start with back at A. So the policies.
Okay.
This will be the exciting part of the meeting. And it, it actually is rather exciting. So I just want to make sure that I explain what's happening and then allow you all to respond because ultimately, this is your process and these are your policies. So we've had some, I think, some sincere efforts to look at our policy manual, section by section, policy by policy. That's taken a tremendous amount of time. What we are trying to do is not that. So what we've done is we've shared every policy that we had with the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. And we've contracted with them to go through them and then compare them to what they would think would be a complete policy manual. And we're going to do this section by section. The first thing I wanted to state is in speaking with Dorothy Presser, who is our liaison from MASC, she thought our policy manual actually wasn't in bad shape. So that was a good thing to hear. And she does this work all over the state. So we're going to do or look at section A and B tonight. Section A and B are, again, the first two sections. I asked her in terms of pacing what she thought. And she felt like if we kept at this, by the end of the calendar year, we should be able to get through all of the sections of our policy manual moving forward. My suggestion, respectful suggestion to the committee, is try to look at these policies almost holistically as a section. And if there are individual policies that you'd like to go back and revisit, that we can certainly go back and revisit, you always have the prerogative to do that. But I think what's important is to have a complete policy manual. At some point, that's been updated. And then if we have to make adjustments, again, we can always make adjustments. I think in the past, we've tried to reach perfection at every single policy level and we just haven't been able to get through because of the volume of policies. So what I like to do is just go through very quickly, section A and section B. In your packet, you saw a, what I'm calling a merged MASC recommended policy manual. That's the one that has the red lines on it. And we've also shared with you the existing Burlington policies. So Dorothy and the conversation that I had with Dorothy would be almost as follows. If she felt there was a missing policy that didn't exist in Burlington, she would suggest an MASC policy, MASC policy to fill that hole. If there was a policy that Burlington had that she felt needed to be updated, then she would make the suggestion for some of the language to be updated. And if there are policy where the Burlington, existing Burlington policy and the MASC policy were really the same, then honestly, you can choose, we can keep the Burlington policy sort of as it is, sort of exists. The first section in A that we're going to talk about in a minute. The MASC has done a lot of work recently with the Attorney General. What has happened over time is as there have been more protected classes added, districts like Burlington have added additional policies to incorporate different protected classes. The Attorney General suggested at some point, modernizing the policy and sort of adding more groups into a more condensed policy language. Darren has gone through sort of that section, looking at the Burlington policy and the suggested MASC policy. And his recommendation, again, was, was shared with you. And again, it does, he does recommend using the MASC language for some of the policies. So I hope that'll make sense when we go through it. So again, if you could look at your section A. Policies. And again, I'm going to try to do this succinctly. You can certainly ask me questions as we go. My suggestion though would also be to, this is a first reading. It doesn't mean we're adopting these. If you could ask questions or make note and then get me those questions, I'll make sure that we, we go through this as, again, as carefully as you need us to go through this. Again, this is your process. These are your policies. So we'll take as much time as you need to do this.
I just have a question.
Ms. Masardo?
So some of them say hold, check with attorney. Are we, has Darren looked, has looked at these?
Yes.
Okay.
And he's sent us a recommendation, which was to follow the MASC policy. And Mary Ann, Darren also sent us that language. And so we can make sure that, Ms. Masardo, that you have that language from Darren as well. MASC didn't want to make a determination as to which policies. She actually said we probably could have kept the Burlington policies, but instead of having eight, we can probably do the same thing in three or four, is, is sort of what, what Darren was recommending.
Okay. Is it clear which ones we're supposed to keep?
I think, obviously it's not because you're asking, but I think that we will go back and make sure everything is clear. I think, again, in the documents that we sent you from MASC, the red line version is the section that I think we should work from. And that shows you sort of what language Dorothy felt like after looking at our policy manual and speaking with me, we sort of merged into what she would say would be an updated section A. So that's what she said. And there's a lot of crossouts because there's a lot of duplicative language and some of it has changed. So, so again, if you look at policy, again, I'm in section A. Policy AA is school district legal status. And again, this is a, this is an MASC policy only. It basically defines the school district. We did not have one, so I asked Dorothy to add in a policy AA. It's just a simple definition. So again, if you don't want it, you all can not include it. But again, that's sort of where AA came from. Policy AB. The people in their school district, again, this is an MASC policy only. We didn't have one. And while the first policy AA defines the school district, this defines in broad terms, the relationship between the school committee and the community. So again, we added, she suggested adding the AB. AC is nondiscrimination policy, including harassment and retaliation. Again, in your redlined version, it does say check with the attorney. Darren has checked this language and he is recommending that we use the MASC language. So the MASC version of this policy was recently revised after extensive work with the Attorney General's office to update the protected classes and to include harassment and retaliation language. Adoption of the MASC version would assure that the district is in compliance with the requirements of the law and regulation according to the Attorney General. So again, it is your vote, but my recommendation is to use the MASC language for AC.
What's ACR?
We're going to get to ACR right now.
Oh.
The MS, MASC version, is that the second one?
The MASC version, if you, again, I'm, I'm not sure first or second. It's the redlined version on your.
Well, it's the one without all the lines through it.
It's one that isn't pressed on.
Yeah. The second one, it is second.
I didn't know which order, I'm sorry, I'm not, I didn't know first or second, so I'm not sure.
It's second.
It's the second one?
AC, then AC and then ACR.
Which is the same policy. So on the, you can't see the red lines.
On the redline version, I see two, AC, and then an ACR.
Use the papers in front of you.
So it's the second.
The AC is the crossout one.
And ACR is an additional.
Okay.
But it's the same.
Okay.
Okay, can I ask a question?
Ms. Simon?
Thank you. I, I read the two different documents that we were sent. And it's true, we couldn't see the red lines on the iPad, but I put it on my desktop computer and I could see the red lines. The packet that we have in hard copy now is, Dr. Conti, which version?
Red lines.
This is the redline version?
They're just black lines.
Mary Ann, did you print both or just, just the merged copy from Dorothy?
The merged copy.
Okay, so this is.
The red lines are black lines.
This one is what I already read on my computer.
Yes. So the ones you left at their desk today, that was, those were from Darren?
Yes.
Okay. So.
So is the one we have in front of you?
It's electronic.
The one we got sent, but that was before Darren saw it. So tonight's pack, packet of paper has Darren's input.
Just, yeah, just on the, just on the AC part of the policy manual. He didn't review everything. He just, he just reviewed the nondiscrimination language to make sure it was inclusive.
Can we get Darren's electronically too?
Yes, we can.
And if I may, Madam Chair.
Yes, Ms. Simon.
The, if, am I correct that Darren is also consolidating some of the duplicate types of? These are, there are many policies that are related around harassment and, and not discrimination and such. Is he consolidating some of them also? Because that would be good.
Yes.
Okay, good. Thank you.
And what I am recommending and with the consolidated redlined manual, Ms. Simon, is the, is the language that's approved by the Attorney General that does consolidate some of this work. So ACR is, again, that's the nondiscrimination policy, including harassment and retaliation. The MASC split the policy into two parts with the intention of making it more understandable. The R included the definitions and procedural elements required. Both AC and ACR should be adopted together. So you have both of those? ACA is nondiscrimination on the basis of sex. The MASC version of this policy adds sexual orientation and gender identity to the policy. Other than that, the versions are the same. ACAB, sexual harassment. Again, this policy was recently revised by MASC, working with the Attorney General's office. The policy assures that the district is in compliance with both state and federal regulations regarding sexual harassment. It also covers the education and work environment, rather than just the workplace, which the Burlington policy seems to do. And again, we're recommending adoption of the MASC version. That is ACAB.
So I, I took notes based on the page numbers and not on the ACA. So I think there's a comment I wanted to make. And I think it was under ACA, which is that in the, and on, and Darren may have already taken this out, but we had, on ACA, nondiscrimination on the basis of sex, the committee will designate an individual to act as the school district's Title IX Compliance Officer. And this is written as a generic thing, which I think is the way it should be. The, the redlined copy I saw still included the names of people who no longer work for the district.
Right.
So I just wanted to be sure that we either updated who it is or that we leave it generic this way. So that was my one comment on that section that I thought. And the same thing was true later with, we had Title IX and title, Section 501 coordinators. In one of the versions, they were listed and named. And again, I think it should be that we will designate an individual and not have the name of the person because the person could change, which it has.
Yeah. And Ms. Simon through the chair, Dorothy wouldn't know who was here or who wasn't. So I'm assuming she just left that in. When we do it, we will leave everyone out and we can put up an insert or do something to identify those, those folks.
So I just wanted to.
That is absolutely correct.
Identify that as something that, if I could also just comment, Dr. Conti, I think this is the right way to do it. I've been trying to get us to upgrade our policy handbook for eight years. And Ms. Monaco and I did some work on it right before COVID and then, we all know COVID. And I am just delighted that this is happening. And I think the, the way to go is, I have some specific little things that might, I might want to tweak, but I feel like we should first go through all the sections as they come to us from Dorothy Presser. And I'm, I am in, in favor of, other than one or two questions like that one, in favor of, this is a first reading, but I'm in favor of these policies the way I saw them, knowing that they're also would be updated by our attorney, Darren Klein. And with his having checked them, I am in support of these, the way they are. And I'll mention, there's only a couple other specifics later that I might want to mention. And I'm, I'm in favor of this. I think that later on, after we get through the whole, I don't know if there's section H. Is it J and H is the last one? And we might, I would like to suggest maybe later in the, in this next year, perhaps we might want to set up a subcommittee that would do ongoing review of policy so we don't end up in this position at this. But at this time, I think that moving forward briefly by looking through the sections is really a good way to go. And I appreciate you bringing it to us that way, Dr. Conti.
Thank you, Ms. Simon. And would you like to move to the next section?
Yeah, so ACAB-R, that's the procedure dealing with sexual harassment. Again, if you adopt the MASC version, which I were recommending of ACAB, which is the prior policy, then they're saying this procedural document is not needed. It is dated as well and may not comply with current law and regulation. So again, if ACAB, then remove ACAB-R. I know it sounds like I'm talking gibberish. Then ACB, nondiscrimination notice, civil rights and safety information for school personnel, parents, and students. And then what the Attorney General is saying is if you adopt AC, the MASC version, you don't need ACB. So again.
If we adopt what, ACE, did you say? AC.
If you adopt AC, then don't need ACB.
Good.
Again, it appears that the content of this policy is adequately covered in the MASC version of ACAB. If we agree this is the case, then the policy may not be needed. Okay? ACE, nondiscrimination of the basis of disability. AC, ACE. The original policy said nondiscrimination is on the basis of handicap, so we are changing that language. So the only difference between the two policies is the wording difference and an additional cross-reference in the MASC version. So again, that policy's been updated. Then AD. The MASC version, which is mission statement, the MASC version of this policy is a placeholder with the intention that a district would include its information. If the committee would like to retain a policy stating the mission, vision, and core values, then we should make sure the content is current. So again, we can certainly add in your mission, vision, and core values into that section. ADC, tobacco products on school premises prohibited. This is an MASC policy only. Having the policy in section A covers the entire district, even though there is a policy in the staff section and the student section, which covers the same topic. So this is where you don't have one, with, I'm just going to suggest that you add in a tobacco products policy. ADDA, background checks. And it appears Burlington has two policies that cover core requirements. The first is dated 7/6/06 and the second is dated 7/15/2014. The one dated 2014 very closely aligns with the MASC policy on background checks, which includes core requirements. The MASC version has more content on incomplete criminal record information and states the requirements regarding sealed records differently. So I'm suggesting the MASC policy for that. It's very similar to your updated policy. R, I'm trying to keep up. The two versions match, so we're set. ADF, the school district wellness program. And again, this policy was recently updated by the district. And again, this policy was recently updated by the district. And there is on our agenda. Yeah, there is on our agenda. We do need to make one amendment to the wellness policy this evening, based on a visit from Desi, so we'll talk about that in a minute. But again, she was saying the policy, we can use our district policy for that in Section ADF. And then, and then she had a policy AD, which we don't have, which I am, she said was not, was not necessary, so.
Madam Chair.
And it said, again, it's more philosophical than operational, so you can include it at your discretion, but she, she, we don't have it, so I wasn't going to include it to add it.
Ms. Simon?
I do have a question on ADF, which is the wellness policy.
Yes.
I know last year that Mr. Jackling and other people spent a lot of time revising and really being very thoughtful about the wellness policy. Is that generally what is here?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
Because we're required to have a wellness policy. So again, we just did Section A. We'll make sure you have a clean copy. You have, at your desk, you had Darren's recommendation. He is recommending the MASC language. And Mary Ann, we provided a digital version that was basically redlined. And what we will do, or ask Dorothy to do now, is provide you a clean merged copy. And then at our next meeting, again, my recommendation would be that you adopt the section, and then if there are individual changes you want to make, we can do it from a clean section, okay? I know I'm.
No, sounds, that's very clear. And Ms. Massardo?
So this wellness, this one-page wellness policy is what you're merging into this one here?
I think there's a one-page policy. And then we also have a wellness manual that is multiple pages. And honestly, I think I need to look, when we get to that on the agenda, I will, I will get there.
Okay.
And again, I think that was just a simple change. Bob, the wellness policy came from an audit?
So every three years, we have, I'm sorry, through the chair. Every, every three years, the Food Services is audited through Desi. And then they review not only our process, but any policies as well, too. So they've made recommendations to our civil rights policy and also our wellness policy. I have not had time to review any of the redlined policies that were submitted by MASC. I'm assuming that since Desi is making these recommendations for the requirement for us to update these policies, that they would align or be very similar. But I can, we can get back to the committee with that.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're looking at Section B now. So again.
It's in the same document.
There was no paper for B. There was just the electronic copy. What, the paper that you had in front of, in front of you was Darren's comments on the, basically the civil rights part of your policy manual. If you need B, I can do that with you, so. Either way. So again, BA, the School Committee, BA is School Committee Operational Goals. Again, in many sections, the first policy in the section sets out the general goal for the section and the topic it deals with. So it's more of a philosophical statement, but that is the intent of BA. BAA, this is an MASC policy that did not exist. The policy sets the expectation that the School Committee will periodically review its procedures and operations with an eye towards improvement. And again, so that's policy BAA.
Policy section B, BPS original.
Original or with, no, the one that says with MASC changes.
Yeah. You can't tell on the iPad, yeah.
But there's a title on the document.
Right, but if they don't show the red lines, it doesn't matter.
But there's additional stuff there.
And plead us, let us know if paper's easier. We can certainly get you.
You can't see the red lines on the iPad is the only weird thing.
Yeah, that's the problem, is the red lines don't come through on the iPads.
All right, we'll figure that out.
Yeah. Yeah, I can, yeah.
So, so again.
They do on my.
First read, first reading, so BAA is again, an MASC policy. This MASC policy sets the expectation, the School Committee will, I already said that, periodically review its procedures and operations with an eye towards improvement. So that's BAA. That's not an existing policy currently. BB, School Committee Legal Status. No changes seem necessary for the Burlington version of this policy. BBA, School Committee Powers and Duties. The MASC version of this policy has an additional section regarding the personnel responsibilities of the School Committee. So we're going to keep the Burlington version of that. I think that was, she said that was fine. BBA, School Committee Member Authority. The two policies match, except for bullet number seven. The Burlington policy seems appropriate for the district. MASC policy uses they instead of he, she, so you all can decide, can decide that, but she said you can keep the Burlington policy for BBA. So BBBA slash B. Member Qualifications Out of Office. The MASC version of the policy adds information on the requirement for conflict of interest training by the Ethics Commission. And so it's recommended you adopt the MASC version of that. BBBC, School Committee Member Resignation. Again, the policies match, except the MASC Reference Manual has eliminated the phrase "established by law," since the legal references are listed with policies as appropriate. So again, virtually the same, except for some editing. BBE, Unexpired Term Fulfillment. Again, the policies match, except for some wording differences, so you all can choose. BCA, School Committee Member Ethics. Again, the two School Committee, the policy matches between MASC and Burlington. BDA, School Committee Organizational Meeting. The MASC version of the policy covers the process for running the election. That's to reorganize this body. This can be helpful information to include in the policy to avoid inclusion. It should reflect local practice, which can differ from committee to committee. Our local practice actually matches up fairly well, having done it for a while. So again, I think we can keep, I guess, the BDA policy is, looked fine to me. BDB, School Committee Officers. School Committee, the MASC policy adds information about the duties of the Vice Chair and Secretary, which are not in the Burlington version. Again, all depends what you want to do. I think, Mr. Foss, isn't there some saying about the Vice President and what's the value of the Vice President that's in, in United States? Didn't someone make a comment of, anyway? I thought there, I thought there was some derogatory comment about the Vice President, so I'll look it up. B, School Committee Officers, that's BDB. BDC. This policy has been deleted from the MASC Reference Manual as the content is covered in other policies noted BBA. So again, we could leave it in or, or take it out. I think, I would recommend that we just leave it in, because it's not, not doing any harm.
Actually, if we're going to comment on this one.
Ms. Simon?
Sorry, thank you. BDC, is that the one that you said we would just leave it in?
Yes, this policy is believed from MASC. I honestly was trying to keep as much of your policies in place as possible, and so she basically said this was unneeded, but I didn't want to tell her to remove it without, you all should remove it, not me, so.
Well, I'd like to have us consider removing it, because it says that the Superintendent shall serve as Secretary and perform all the duties that are prescribed by law and other duties as we may. So is that, is that, I mean, that sounds off to me from what your role is, but if you see, if your role is as Secretary, we could leave it in. So I'm just curious what other people think. We could just leave it in if no one else has any concern about it.
Again, I, I think this Secretary is different than the Secretary that you're thinking. So I think they're thinking it more as in the Office of Secretary, not the support person for the School Committee. But again, my point in telling you BDC is not needed is, you can write it in your notes, and in second reading, you want to keep it, great. If you want to dump it, you can dump it. I was just trying not to eliminate policies, because that's not my job.
Sure.
Dorothy is saying you don't need BDC. BDD, School Committee Superintendent Relationship. So MASC policy defines the relationship between the committee and superintendent. It preserves the superintendent's authority to make operational decisions, so that's BDD. BDE, Subcommittee of the School Committee. The opening paragraph of the MASC version has been amended to recognize that subcommittees often exist from year to year. It also eliminates the bullet regarding the Chair and Superintendent being ex officio members of any subcommittee. The Chair being an ex officio member can cause open meeting law issues. The Subcommittee can always request the attendance and participation of the Superintendent in its work. So again, they're recommending the MASC version, just because it's more up to date. BDF, Advisory Committee of the School Committee. The MASC version of the policy has additional bullet regarding the open meeting law and additional legal reference. Again, very similar to your existing policy. I just think it needs to be updated. BDFA, School Councils. The policy regarding school councils were recently revised and consolidated in the MASC Reference Manual to include only BDFA and BDFA-E. These versions are more concise and less procedural than the previous versions. The Burlington versions are the former MASC versions. So again, you can update or, or not.
I'm not sure what you're saying, that we, what are we seeing here in this document? The MASC version or our version, our old version?
I think you're seeing the MASC version.
Okay, it seems fine to me, then.
I think that was the intention.
Okay.
In my notes. BDFAE1, School Improvement Plans. Again, these have been recently updated, so they're recommending both the MASC versions for the School Improvement Plan, which is BDFAE1 and BDFAE2. They're recommending the School Committee versions. And then BDFAE3, Conduct of School Council Business. Again, they're also recommending the MASC version that has been updated.
None of those are in here.
Yeah. Ms. Simon?
None of those are in there?
Yeah, but I actually have a, this BDFAE is titled "The School Improvement Plan," and we used to have School Improvement Plans, but we don't anymore. I thought we had Plans for Success.
Yeah.
Is that some, I would like to just switch that to be accurate, and I'm not sure why MASC wouldn't already have made that change, but can you check with Mrs. Dorothy about that, Ms. Presser? Thank you.
All right, so I need to check on BDFAE1, E2, and E3.
Yeah.
I'll check those. And I'm probably just missing something, so I'm sorry. They've, all the letters run together with me after a while. BDG is School Attorney. And again, two versions have much the same information. The Burlington version has an added paragraph regarding the committee making decision to seek advice, which seems to overlap with the last paragraph of the policy. The MASC version also has updated pronouns, so again, we were recommending the MASC version. We're getting there, I promise.
You're making good progress.
BE, School Committee Meetings. Two versions of the policies match, except for updated legal references in the MASC version. So where there are legal updates, I chose the MASC version. BEC, Executive Session. MASC version lays out the reasons for executive session a bit differently. It also includes information on the review and release of executive session minutes. So again, we recommended that change. BEDA. Notification of School Committee Meetings. The MASC version has additional information on posting requirements, both in terms of timing and agenda topics. BEDB, again, Agenda Format. They don't recommend, this is again, an MASC policy only, we don't have it. Again, that would be up to the committee. I don't think we're recommending adding that, but if you all want to see a different agenda format and policy, then you would need to create that. BEDD, Rules of Order. The two versions of the policy match. BEDF, MASC version has more guidance on votes in executive session, so we chose the MASC version. BEDG Minutes. The numbering is a bit different on the policies, but the wording is the same. Again, so we can keep whichever version that you would, you would like. Again, in those types of cases, I typically recommended the MASC version, just because it has a bit more information. BEDH, Public Comment at School Committee Meetings. While the two versions generally cover the same material and have much of the same wording, there are some differences. The MASC version has an additional paragraph in the introduction about public comment not being a discussion or debate. And bullet number four of the two policies differ in ways that may be consequential, given the recent Superior Court ruling. So again, I'm going to recommend we go with the MASC version. Again, the content of both your policies is very similar.
Before you move on?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Simon?
I think Mr. Foss had his hand up first.
That's the Conti presser, it's all good.
Okay. So I have two comments on this one. On the bullet point number one, it says at the start of each regularly scheduled School Committee meeting. If people want to leave it that way, that's fine, but I feel like we often do the warrant and we do the minutes, and so if we would say near the beginning of each regularly scheduled School Committee meeting, I would prefer that, because it would be more accurate and people would not have unmet expectations. So at this, near the beginning of each regular, it's, it's not very different, but I'm concerned about people's unmet expectations there. And.
So.
I would propose that we make that change.
I have that under BEDH.
BEDH, yes.
So near the beginning.
It's bullet number one, yeah. Instead of at the start of, it would be near the beginning of. And regarding number four, which you referenced, I would like to have an update from Attorney Klein, since the Brennan Court decision, as to how that would be worded to match the new court ruling.
Okay. So update from Darren, Mary Ann, on BEDH.
Number four.
BEE, Special Procedures for Conducting Hearings. The two versions of the policies match. BG, BGA, School Committee Policy Development. The two versions match, except for a sentence that has been removed from the MASC Reference Policy. So. that has been removed from the MASC Reference Policy. So again, unless the sentence is completely problematic, I would recommend the MASC Reference. BGB, Policy Adoption. Okay. The policies match, except for the requirement of a two-thirds vote in the Burlington version, which should remain if that is the practice. So MASC is a simple majority. I think we should keep the Burlington policy because it's substantively different, unless you all want to go back and change it. But again, I'm just imploring you to please start from a complete policy manual, and then you can go back and change that. But there is
It would take a two-thirds to make it.
It would take a two-thirds to change that. So that's BGB.
Four.
So.
Four.
BGC, Policy Review and Revision. And the second paragraph of the policy is different wording, but have the same intent. The last paragraph of the Burlington version has been removed from the MASC version, given that the policy manuals are generally in electronic formats. So again, I think it's okay to update that to the MASC version. BGD, School Committee Review of Procedures. The two versions of the policy match. The MASC version is only in Section B, however. So you have it also in C, so we can probably remove it from C when we get there. BGE, Policy Dissemination. The two versions match. BGF, Suspension of Policies. The two versions match. BHC, School Committee Staff Communications. This MASC policy basically outlines the chain of communication for staff in the school committee. It also defines the parameters for visits to schools by members of the committee. So that would be a new policy, BHC. BHE, Use of Electronic Messaging by School Committee Members. This MASC policy helps to find the guardrails for school committee use of electronic messaging in keeping with the open meeting law. Again, I don't believe we have that policy now, so that would be a new one. BIA, New School Committee Member Orientation. The only difference between the two policies is in the first paragraph where the Burlington version specifically names the law the policy is based on. So again, we can keep, Burlington policy is fine. BIBA, The School Committee Conferences, Conventions, and Workshops. This is an MASC policy only. Inclusion or not is at your discretion. So my thinking of that is to leave it out unless you want to put it in, but you all can, again, do what you want. BID, School Committee Compensation and Expenses. There is an additional sentence in the MASC version regarding compensation for school committee members. Other than that, the policies match. So again, I would use the local policy on that one.
Can we see the two for that one then?
You can.
So I'm thinking, I'm realizing, anything that's crossed out is not on here, but it might show when we open it in Word. Were those
I see the two versions.
Oh, you're on your computer though?
Right.
Yeah. So those one, two, three that I said I don't have, are those deleted?
Yes.
Then that's why we don't, okay. Then that's why I don't see it on the iPad.
Okay.
So don't worry about it.
I didn't know about the iPad.
No, no, I didn't either.
I'm sorry.
I read it at home on my computer.
I just look at the computer, so.
It's okay. But that's why, okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Ms. Simon?
Could you explain the difference between the two BIDs?
In my notes, I said there was an additional sentence in the MASC version regarding compensation for school committee members. Other than that, the policy matches. So there must be, is there a sentence that's crossed out that talks about?
Well, they're all crossed out. Maybe the first one, two, three. The first paragraph is more.
We can look at it between now and the second reading.
I think that's what I would hope.
Oh, I see. Sir, with that compensation.
Okay.
Yeah. I think ours is accurate for us. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that's why I would sort of keep it.
Thank you.
School Committee BJ, School Committee Legislative Program. Again, this is an MASC policy only. Not having the policy does not preclude the committee from engaging in the activities outlined in the policy. Again, I would leave it out just because you don't have it currently. If you want to add it in, you certainly can. BK, School Committee Memberships. Again, this is a Burlington policy only. Not having the policy does not prevent the committee from activities outlined in the policy. So if you want to keep BK, then you can keep BK. So with that, that is section, I'm sorry for the tediousness, but Section A and Section B. This is a first reading. Please make sure you have all the information. I think it's much clearer on the computer. If you don't have a device that you can see the redlining, then we will print, we'll print copies for everybody. And again, my suggestion is going to be, please don't let perfect get in the way of not having policies. And if we can start from some completed sections, we can always go back and amend some of the language. But again, that's just my suggestion.
Thank you.
Okay.
Are we ready to, you have a question, Ms. Simon?
I just have a question. I know we got a request from the Fox Hill teachers to add a policy around no trespass, no people on school property during school hours. Would that type of policy be in this purview, or would that be separate?
I think that'd be in a separate section.
Okay.
But nothing would preclude you from creating a policy as we go. You've done that with, I think with library, we've done an update. We've done another policy on something else. When we update that policy or create that policy, we'll send it to MASC, and they can put it in the right, they can put it in the right section.
And would they, or would be able to take that policy from them? I guess my, more is my question.
Again, no trespassing. I can certainly look up a no trespassing MASC policy.
Yeah, I don't even want to call it trespassing, but like no walking your dog on school property. I know in Safe Roots, they said most towns have a no dog on school property policy. I wonder if there's a bigger, no non-school business on school property.
I don't know. I think we have the no dog, except for service animals, but I can certainly look that up. I was sorry, focused on just A and B for right now.
Yeah, no, it's fine.
And Bob, we were going to add signage to, and work with Park and Rec to add the signage to the walking pass. Is that correct? Vito called us, right? And he was making a distinction from my understanding between the walking pass and the playground?
Right. So through the chair, there's been some multiple conversations about this and a couple reiterations of, yes, some of it was with the Recreation Department. A lot of this has been with Vito, but some of the signs recently are being made or purchased in-house to the school department, just because they match similar signs either in other locations or other schools. So the most recent ones, again, were taken care of in-house.
Thank you. Ms. Simon?
I know this is a first reading, but I just want to state that I'm in support of these changes and the document as proposed tonight with the couple of things that we mentioned. And I'm delighted that we've gotten through two sections in one meeting. So thank you, Dr. Conti. Did a good job.
And my suggestion, any questions you have, please email me, and I'll make sure that everyone is aware of the, of the questions sort of from an informational perspective. And then we can address those specifically prior to the second reading. Again, I know this is an exciting stuff, but we really need to get through the manual. So thank you.
Ms. Simon?
Yes, and policymaking is one of the three responsibilities of the school committee. And so this is really important, that we manage it, even though it may be a little boring. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Are we ready to move to the next item, which is the lab collaborative agreement?
More than ready. Yeah. So again, we have some second readings coming up. So again, you all got the lab collaborative agreement, the updated agreement, and the expansion to include Watertown as a first reading. I should use the notes, I should use the notes I have. I do. Let me just, sorry. Still recovering from. So again, my, no, I got it. Again, lab collaborative agreement, second reading, asking the committee to vote approval and to sign. And again, when this process is completed, we'll be sent to the commissioner for approval, and will be effective July 1st, 2023. The reason I need your vote is we have to take the package from the five communities and get it into the commissioner, and he would then, he sort of organizes the expansion of the collaborative.
We approve the lab collaborative agreement as presented to us.
Second.
Any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I'm in favor. Five zero zero.
Again, we have what we call our school improvement plans, which are required by regulation. We are calling Planning for Success, which is an approved DESI process for school improvement. So again, school committee, I recommend school committee approving on second reading the elementary planning for success document.
Second. Any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I'm in favor. Five zero zero.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Very similarly, you all had the first reading for the middle school, School Improvement Planning for Success document. I request the school committee vote to approve the school improvement plan for Marshall Simons on a second reading.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I'm in favor. Five zero zero.
Finally, Madam Chair, the recommended that the school committee approve the high school planning for success document that was submitted by Principal Mark Sullivan as a first reading at our last meeting.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I'm in favor. Five zero zero.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Moving on in the agenda, like to, we have an end of year trip coming up, believe it or not, for Marshall Simons Middle School to Canterbury Lake Park. This is an annual trip. And Dr. Purchase has his trip scheduled for Monday, June 12th. So it's recommended the school committee approve out-of-state travel for the Canterbury Lake Park trip for the middle school.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I'm in favor. Five zero zero.
Thank you, Madam Chair. May I move on to the equity audit discussion? Yes, thank you.
Yes, yes. Sorry.
Okay. So in your packets, we had, I had a kickoff meeting with the Commonwealth Consulting Agency, again, with the primary partner, Kristin Rodriguez, Dr. Rodriguez, regarding a, the equity audit that we're going to complete for the school district. In your packet, they provided a timeline, some guiding questions, and some of the process. In speaking with the researchers and the firm, they firmly believe that they can have the audit done by the end of, by the end of June. So by, really by the end of the school year, we should have the completed audit. Again, in your packet, you saw some of the key questions that they're going to be exploring. Actually think they're a little bit broad at this point, and we may want to narrow them down just so we can get deeper, but we're going to have those conversations in the district. And again, their goal, I just want to make sure I state their goal, is to assess students, student access to high-quality programs, high-quality teaching, just discipline procedures, equitable resources, and root cause analysis of persistent opportunity gaps for students who have been historically marginalized. So they're going to be looking at this. They've asked us to provide a, lots of background data and information, and they're going to be following up with some focus groups and some surveying to make sure that they cover. So they'll both be using quantitative data and then also qualitative data to support what they're finding in the quantitative data. And again, they're going to be onsite. There's going to be surveys that we need to administer, and there's going to be focus groups held. They'll obviously get releases if they're speaking to students for the focus group conversations. And we want to be as inclusive as we can with those focus groups moving forward. I know we've had some students come before the school committee, and we will make sure to include those students in our, the focus group work that's going to take place. So I'm excited. We're doing the audit. I like the timeline, and I do think they're going to focus on quantitative information that we have as a district, and then looking to support their conclusions with qualitative, again, focus groups and survey work.
And I was, Ms. Simon, I was just going to make one comment. Is, I just wanted to say, we're also saving money by going through this particular organization too. Is that correct?
Yes, but again, the information is what's, what's important.
Of course.
And again, I think that, and just getting it done, I think, is
Huge.
is important. So I think, I know this was something the committee was very interested in. I just wanted to make sure that I sort of followed through. And again, the plan is to try to have this done by the end of the, end of the school year.
And that's exciting. Ms. Simon?
Yes. I appreciate you bringing this to us. I have a couple, a question. It, this timeline says that they shared a document list previous to today, and that they had an initial meeting scheduled with the superintendent and leadership team. Has that already happened?
Yes.
So we already have begun this process. The next thing on the timeline is April 7th, when some documents are due. And so my last question is, how can we, this is now a public document, this audit timeline, and also the backup information about the Commonwealth Consulting Agency. And I'd like to know how we can share that with the public. Is it something, is there a place on the website we can post it? Where can we share this with the community?
Again, through the chair, Ms. Simon, I think the website would be a good first place to do that. And I can certainly work with Bob to make sure the timeline and the background information gets up there, some of the guiding questions, especially if we narrow down some of those questions, sort of why and what we're doing.
Yep.
And we can also provide regular, regular updates, I think would be something that we would, we can certainly make sure that we do.
I would like to do that. And I, I know that our, our main webmaster is out right now, but Bob is, you said Bob would be able to, to do this. And if, if we do set it up, would it be under the DEI tab in the district menu? So people would know where to look for it?
Again, maybe put a banner. I'd have to look at it. I don't, I don't.
All right. I just want to be sure, because there's a lot of people who have been looking for this all year. And it unfortunately got delayed, but now we're on track. And I'm really glad, but I want to make sure we share this information. And that way, if people have, you know, if they see, if you give updates, I think that'll be fabulous. If we narrow the questions, that's really great. So I'm really delighted. Thank you.
Thank you. And are we ready to move to Food Services update?
Sure, Madam Chair. So just trying to find the right information that I have, and I will. I apologize. There we go. Okay. Couple things, we just wanted to provide an, an update. You obviously got lots of information from the cafeteria. There are many changes that are happening. I think those changes have been disruptive, more disruptive than I've liked. I do think there are some valid criticism about the level of communication that, that's needed. I also believe, and I've said this with the managers who I've met, this process works in many, many cafeterias across the country. It can work here. I think we do have to listen carefully. We may need to limit some menu options, but please keep in mind, I think we're at day 10 now. It's going to take some time for our students to get used to making choices, and maybe for us to fine tune the menus. I think Whitsuns did have a stated policy goal of getting students to try different foods. So there are items that are unfamiliar. There are more vegetarian options. There's just a more diverse menu. The food waste, I don't like to see any food wasted. Look at me, and you can tell that. But the, the arrangement here is that it's not, it's not more money borne by the taxpayer. We have a contractual arrangement. It's in Whitsun's best interest. by the taxpayer, we have a contractual arrangement, it's in Whitson's best interest to figure out, um, to match the meals to the student population and to provide that, but it's going to take some time to, to do that. So I think the deliveries will improve, I think, um, we'll move forward. I believe staffing is an issue, and I think that we have, um, tried to expand hours that people can have, obviously for compensation. We've also added, Bob posted three, five positions, so, um, again, I know hiring is challenging, but, again, we are in day 10 right now to do that. So I think, again, I don't want to minimize the feedback that you got today, it is real, the emotions are real, people are trying their hardest, I want to make sure I give them credit. Um, one of the comments was, why did we do it in March and not wait till the fall? And what I would say is, I'm happy that these changes are happening now in March, and not at the start of a school year, when we're wrestling with transportation changes and, and everything else, as difficult that is, as it is now, I think starting the year, this experience will really serve us, serve us well doing that. We are doing and having, um, liaison, so, Madam Chair, I want to make sure that that position is in place, and has been invaluable for us in terms of communication, and I do think we've given some feedback, that communication, um, we have high expectations for communication here, both not only in the delivery of information, but also in the listening, um, area, and I think we need to, um, have that going back. We are serving, Bob, roughly 500 more lunches a day than we were prior to the change in management, so, Bob, we went from around, what, 2,000 meals to about 2,500?
Per day.
Per day? So we are seeing an increase in participation, um, and again, not everyone is pleased, but, um, there have been some positive, uh, comments about the, um, about the, about the food, and, and again, we want to support our cafeteria workers and make sure that the, um, job is doable, um, but we also want to make sure we continue, I think, to, um, improve the eating experience of students, and we sort of get through, I think we just need to give it a little bit more time than, than 10 days, um, and we need to try to get our workers some help as quickly as, as quickly as we can. So I think those are our two, um, my two priorities with sort of the, the update, but we are seeing, again, about a 25% increase in lunches served, uh, per day. Bob, is there anything else you want to add? And I know people have some comments, and so, so please, um, again, people have been really working hard, so I want to make sure I give, again, our calf workers a tremendous amount of, of credit, and it is new, the menus are new, the, some of the, the cooking is new, and, um, it is, it is, it is a lot to take on, um, in, in March.
Through the chair.
Just so we don't get fact-checked on this, 14 days have been completed, um, with the school lunch, with the new company, so, we are still going through the process, we are still learning. Um, communication definitely is something that we've discussed multiple times, um, a newsletter is going out daily, uh, so that has been a change that started this week, that is new. Um, it's not enough, so we're going to continue to work with more, um, we are working with liaison, um, we can name her, Carrie Noke, um, again, trying to intermingle the two roles, uh, has definitely taken more time than we anticipated, um, but that communication is working better. Um, Carrie is definitely doing a great job going in between buildings, uh, communicating with staff daily. Um, again, it is a learning experience that we're all working through, uh, but again, it's been three weeks, right? This is where we're at, and we're taking this feedback seriously, and we're trying to make adjustments daily as we can. Um, you know, some of the things are outside of our control, uh, so what we have besides offering additional hours, um, and posting positions, um, I've kind of laid it out simply, if you can't do four fruit, do three, if you can't do three, do two, right? Like, we'd love to offer as many choices as possible, if there's only so many hands and so many hours in a day, quite simply, so, again, we are hearing it, we are listening, and, uh, we'll continue to work with our team.
So my question again is, what's Carrie's official title? And is it communicated to Katrina and the rest of the staff that, that her role as liaise, so that they're not feeling, if they feel like they're not able to communicate with Katrina, which seemed a very, a very clear theme tonight, how do we fix that?
Um, again, you asked me publicly, so I guess I will address it publicly.
Right, okay.
I guess part of it's personnel, right?
Yep, yep.
Um, Carrie has a dual role.
Yep.
Um, so she is a point five and a point five.
Mm-hmm.
Right, so she wears the hat of a clerical personnel, and wears the hat of a interim food services manager, um, employed by Burlington Public Schools, right? So then, we also have Katrina, who is employed by Whitsons, uh, so their roles intermingle point five at the time.
Right. So I'm still trying to get her 100% as liaise, and I'm going to keep pushing for that. Um, anyone else have any other comments?
I mean, I just have, I, I have met with most of these, they've called me, I've seen them in schools, we ate lunch at the high school last week, it was delicious. I've got most, almost all positive feedback from parents and teachers, I know they're working very hard. What disappoints me is if they feel like they can't reach someone at Whitsons, and if Carrie can't reach someone at Whitsons, do we have someone that can here? I think is my question, like, who owns that relationship? Is it Carrie? Is it you, Bob? Is it Nicole? Like, if, if that's the problem, then I think that we can fix.
Mm-hmm.
If we need a new person at Whitsons, or I want someone to hear this feedback at Whitsons, that's the, one of the proponents of hiring a vendor, is that they are our employee, right? Um, so I want that feedback to get to Whitsons. Um, I, I know we can help them in many, many ways, but I, if, if that's true, um, that they can't reach Whitsons, then I think we need to make that happen. Um, my other second piece is, it was tiny little comment that was thrown out, but that's also the, the lines are, I think, one of the other concerns, and that has to do with, she was talking about the scanning of the, the little kids scanning their, um, badges. Is that syst, I've seen the system, it's, it's antiquated. Is that something we can invest, I know we have money we have to spend in the cafeteria budget, is there, operationally, if we update, excuse me, that system, is that something we can use that money on, and perhaps move that line along and take one stressor out of that line? Uh, that's my other question.
Mr. Kuna.
I would love to comment on these, um, can I go backwards, please? So, um, I don't believe the system we have is antiquated, um, to scan systems, I believe the practice that we have in place, um, doesn't foster the greatest, um, working process. Uh, what I mean by that is, is that, um, we use a printed paper card and then laminate it, um, so it definitely doesn't get handled well and doesn't age well. I mean, maybe if we were to move towards a plastic card or something like that, um, we may see a little bit better transaction. The system itself is, is pretty straightforward, um, so as far as typing in a number or anything like that, um, is, is fully capable of it. Um, we have spares in stock, it's up to date, and, um, again, I'll take that as feedback, definitely, but I just think there's some process that we could probably change, um, to make that experience better. Um, the other part is, um, I don't want to say anything negative about any comments that were said, I have not had that same experience reaching out to, I have also shared numbers, um, with all the cafeteria staff, um, if there's a particular number that they don't have, I'm happy to share that as well. Um, so we have, besides Jess Katrina, uh, Katrina is our full-time in-house, um, food district manager from Whitsons. Um, we also have two general managers from Whitsons as well, too, um, that have been here every single day since the start to help the transition. Um, they have publicly said, take my number, take my email address, they've been at every trainings, they've been in and out at every school, so, um, between myself, Carrie, and three people from Whitsons, um, if they can't get ahold of one of us, then we'll apologize, um, and then we can share more numbers. So, um, again, I'm, I'm open to sharing more numbers, I just want to make sure that everybody knows that, when I say everybody, all the cafeteria managers, if they're watching or here this tomorrow, that if they don't have enough numbers, I will share more.
How are the numbers shared?
Through.
Is, is there a list or email, or, so is there, like, I guess, is there a consolidated list that everyone can just look at and use, or is it multiple emails where people have to try and search through things? Is there, is there some sort of a official list that someone can just go to and not have to find 15 emails?
Um, it was shared through email, but I'll make sure to send it again.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments?
Yeah. Um, thank you. Um, so, what I have is, is requests for information and action. One is, I'm getting honestly conflicting reports about what the actual changes in participation are, so I would like to see hard numbers if possible at, at, like, maybe the next meeting. Um, I'd also like to know the financial impact of hiring, I know you mentioned earlier, Bobby, you've got five, um, what do you call it?
Positions.
Yeah, postings. Postings, okay, that's the word I was searching for. Um, so I'd like to know the financial implications of that, um, you know, how many hours, um, does that mean benefits, et cetera? And then, um, my last request is that before the contract is renewed for next year, it come back to the committee for a discussion so that we can, um, so that we can talk about it, and, and maybe talk about some of the things like, the, um, the plastic, you know, all of those plastic containers, I, I just have a real problem with that, and there's, there's a whole lot of issues that I would just like to have a discussion before a contract is formally signed for next year, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right.
And again, part of that conversation, Madam Chair, and I, and I know it's late and we have more agenda items to go, but there are some ratios here, so it's, it's not random. So, Bob, a figure that you gave to me, that sort of an industry standard that Whitsun uses is, what, 18 and a half meals?
Eighteen point five meals per hour.
Of, of worker time?
Correct.
So as our participation goes up, we may need more staff to, to maintain that, that ratio. So I think the data that you're asking for is important, because that'll determine our, or staffing would be how many meals we're preparing, um, preparing a day. I'm not saying that's the right ratio, I don't know the business at all, but I'm saying that they, they do have a, they do have a, um, what, an industry standard that they, that they use for school lunches?
Right, so, um, based on the numbers of lunches that have gone up, that 500 approximately is the average, um, per district, uh, for our district, per day. So we know that the middle school is our highest increase, um, the high school is our second highest increase, and the elementary schools are roughly similar in the 30 to 50 per day, and again, that fluctuates depending on what's being served. That being said, um, Carrie, myself, Whitsuns have looked at some of the numbers to see where they're going up, that's why the recommendation was, instead of three, move to five postings for positions, uh, and based on the number of meals being produced daily, uh, that's why the positions were recommended to be posted.
So, so again, I think there's some legitimate concerns, just because of the number of meals being served, so that is valid feedback, and we're trying to respond to make sure those ratios stay manageable.
Thank you, and Ms. Monica.
Um, like, like I said at first, I'm actually getting conflicting information about participation, wondering if it's, um, meals that are being taken, or if it's meals that are being prepared. Anyway, I, I don't know, and I just, I'm hoping to get that information at a later date, okay?
Thank you. And I believe there's one other item to discuss under this particular.
Uh, there is. Madam Chair, thank you. Um, so, um, I'll just give some background and then ask for a, a vote at the end, so as a part of routine administrative review by the state of our school, by the state of our school lunch program, again, every three years, it was noted that our current price for adult meals needs to be slightly adjusted in order to be in compliance with federal regulations. I can read the regulation if you really need me to.
That's okay.
Essentially, the amount charged for adult meals is required to support the full cost of the meal, other revenues received in conjunction with the school lunch program, again, an example would be federal reimbursements, et cetera, may not be used to offset the cost of the adult meal. The current rate being charged in the district for adult meals is $4.25, including tax. To comply with regulation, this needs to be increased to a minimum of $4.78, including tax. While the $4.78 minimum is required, the school committee also has the option to set the adult meal cost above this minimum, for which all revenues received above the cost would be used to support ongoing program needs and improvement, equipment purchases, et cetera, we can't use the money for anything outside of the food service umbrella. Increasing the price above, um, the cost increases our food ser, uh, again, uh, I'm sorry, increasing the price above minimum also mitigates the risk of having to adjust a price every year as the minimum required cost increases, so this changes every year. Again, our food service manager suggested that increasing to $5 would likely be sufficient to remain in compliance with the minimum required cost without the need to adjust again for one or two more years. So it's recommended the school committee vote to increase the cost of adult meals only to at least the current required minimum of $4.78, but my request is that you just increase the, um, adult meals to $5.
Thank you. Any motion?
I'll make a motion to, uh, increase the cost of adult meals to $5 per meal.
Second.
Any additional discussion?
I received a question, um, on how this is administrated in the new system, the using PayPams, et cetera, that was the question, I, that, nobody knows how to, how the teachers can buy the meals.
Through the chair, so, uh, we did, Carrie, actually, Noke in the food services, sent out a message this week to staff.
Okay.
Um, giving them directions on how to do that, uh, also in PayPams, the system has been updated, uh, to include our staff already, uh, almost as like a pre-registered, they still have to go on there and put a funding source, uh, onto it, and then activate the account.
Okay.
So, again, any other discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I'm in favor, so it's five zero zero.
Um, thank you, Madam Chair, the, um, Bob, there were two policies that needed to be, um, updated as a result of our three-year visit. Um, one I thought we updated as part of our policy manual conversation.
So I looked briefly, and, um, between the two policies in wellness and in civil rights, um, I believe the wording is very similar. Not being a lawyer, I would think that we should at least recommend, um, somebody look at them and see if they're close enough. Um, I don't know if MSEA approves them as is, uh, I know that these were given to us by DESI, um, but again, since we're reviewing the policy anyways, I think it's worth checking on.
So the wellness, the wellness policy in, in particular, again, I know I'm reading a lot to you tonight, but I'll try to be succinct, it's, um, it's policy of the school district that all foods and beverages, uh, made available on campus during the school day are consistent with the school lunch program nutrition guidelines. The school district will remain in compliance with all federal and state nutrition standards for all food served in schools, including smart snacks and A-list state compliance for vending in à la carte. This compliance starts one-half hour before the school day until one-half hour after the close of the school day. Snacks and vending also comply with the peanut and nut-free suggested list of snacks. Fundraising during the school day may not include food items. Guidelines for the reversible school meals will not be less restrictive than regulations and guidance issued by the Secretary of Agriculture pursuant to law. The district will create procedures that address all foods available to students throughout the school day in the following areas. Guidelines for maximizing nutritional value by decreasing fat and added sugars, increasing nutrition density, and moderating portion size of each individual food or beverage sold within the school department. Separate guidelines for foods and beverages in the following categories. One, foods and beverages include, included in, uh, à la carte sales in the food service program on school campuses. Two, foods and beverages sold in vending machines, snack bars, school stores, and concession stands. Three, foods and beverages sold as part of school-sponsored fundraising activities. Four, refreshments served, served at party celebrations and meetings during the school day. And five, specify that its guidelines will be based on nutrition goals, not-profit motives, um, nutrition and physical education. The school district will provide nutrition education aligned with standards established by the USDA's National School Lunch Program and School Breakfast Program in all grades. The school district will provide physical education training aligned with the standards established by the Department of Education. The wellness. The wellness program coordinators in consultation with the wellness committee will develop procedures that address nutrition and physical education. So, I believe this language has to be added to our wellness policy. And again, I will try to incorporate this into the Section B that you had for a second reading. And again, it's be, Bob, this is as a result of the three-year compliance visit by DESI?
Correct.
Okay.
Three-year compliance.
And this is the policy that I'm, that we need addressed, wellness and civil rights.
Specifically, there were three action items from the, the visit by DESI, and it was civil rights, update to the policy, wellness, update to the policy, and then the adult charge for meals.
Thank you. Any questions, Ms. Simon?
So, who is the origin of the language that we have in front of us that Dr. Conti just read?
That's my question.
Did DESI give it to us?
The representative from DESI that performed the audit.
Gave us that?
Correct.
Okay. And they just want us to fold it into our current thing, or does it replace something in our current policy?
Through the chair, so they reviewed our current policies and noted that this language was missing from our current policies and gave us that language.
Okay. And if I may, Madam Chair, and was their recommendation around civil rights, was that integrated into our new, did they also make a recommendation for civil rights policy change or additions?
You know, separate topic, yes. So, after this wellness one, we'll discuss that one.
Okay, so, I didn't see one here, so, okay. So, that's fine. That's great.
And through the chair, Ms. Simon, we just went through the entire civil rights section as approved by MASC, the Attorney General, and our attorney. I think we're okay. If DESI has a problem, I think they should talk to MASC, the Attorney General, and, and our attorney. So, again, I think the language that we need to, this is the wellness policy, and I actually like, with your permission, to take this language, also share it with MASC, and make sure, again, this was in Section B of the section that we just did, and we will fold it in. I think, Bob, we could tell the auditor that we had it as a first reading, and, and that we're planning on having a second reading for that part of our policy manual at our next meeting. And again, if, if Ms. Presser says this is fine, then I will tell you that recommendation on our next meeting, which I'd like to clear up too before we adjourn for tonight.
Great, thank you.
All right, and are we ready to move on to facilities and finances?
Bob, do you have everything you need from the audit? I just want to make sure.
So, that was a first.
We did the adult lunch prices, the wellness policy, and the civil rights.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand that that was a first reading, so that's, that was a first reading?
Yes, and again, I'd like it to be part of our policy manual as we have moving forward.
Yep. So, are we okay to move on to?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, finances, I'm sorry, facilities and finances, Dr. Conti.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm gonna give my voice a bit of a break. Bob, we have the Fox Hill Building Committee. What I would like to thank before we get into too many specifics is I do want to thank the Fox Hill staff. We had a visioning meeting for two hours on, on Wednesday afternoon as part of their faculty meeting, and it was an extended faculty meeting, and I think there were close to 45 to 50 teachers who, who remained, and I think their input, according to the designer and our OPM, was, was great. So, again, want to make sure I thank them for their time. We're having the same, excuse me, visioning experience with the Pine Glen staff tomorrow afternoon, and looking forward to their contributions as well. So, again, and we've had some other visioning stuff going on, but Bob, I will defer, because we have a thousand dates, I think, and, and that we need to convey. I'm not sure this is the best way to do it, but we should probably at least get our next school building committee meeting announced, and then figure out how to communicate that. But there's been a communication meeting too, I think, last week too. So, a lot going on with Fox, the Fox Hill project.
Well, through the chair, I also wanted to thank, thank you, the Fox Hill staff for the meeting last week at Wednesday. That was their staff meeting, that was combined into a visioning meeting. And again, many, many staff members chose to stay later on, and their input was valuable. As Dr. Conti mentioned, tomorrow, Pine Glen, again, during their staff meeting, so pre-thank you to those that give the valuable feedback. We do have our next SBC meeting for April 13th, and after April 13th, we have May 2nd and multiples that I will list at next meetings. But April looks like a big month, and May looks like even a bigger month for meetings. One that we're just trying to get the message out soon is gonna be a community visioning meeting. We're looking at April 3rd for the first series of that. Similar to what we've done for administrative staff and for the Fox Hill and Pine Glen staff, these visioning meetings are not at the base level, but they're looking at anything from building design, options that we're all looking for, and it's trying to get a feel, you know, from administrative point of view, a community point of view, and a staff point of view, you know, key, key features, right? Is it gonna be a super-efficient building? Is it gonna be something that has bright lights and natural sunlight? Is it gonna be something that adapts itself well into the, the community? All of those are a yes, right? So, we know we're looking for that as a minimum, but what else, right? What are the key features? We did try to have a hidden pool, as Ms. Chen mentioned, when that's not gonna happen. But again, that, that's a joke. Ultimately, what we are looking for is really the feedback to make sure that the designers get what this community is looking for before they put their designs to paper, so.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on Fox Hill? Okay, so, how about BHS update, please?
Only big update I have is last night, I want to thank the select board. I did attend their meeting for the statement of interest, to have them read it and vote on it. Unanimously, they were in favor and supported it. We did make a joke, but hopefully it comes true that this is lucky 13. So, again, we'll have our fingers crossed. The deadline for that is April 14th, and so we will be submitting for the Burlington High School statement of interest this year.
Thank you. Any questions on that, Ms. Simon?
Yeah, I just wanted to take a minute as we submit our 13th application for the high school to be renovated or replaced, that this is not because we just sort of enjoy doing this. I want to give some people a brief history. Ten years ago, we had a report, a master plan of all of our buildings, and got a report of what needed to be done to maintain and manage, whether it was replace sinks, or soffits or roofs, and their top, what they identified was that the high school was the top priority of the buildings that needed to be either majorly renovated or replaced. And that's why we began to apply, to ask the state for support. And that was before I was on the committee. So, we've done that, and the MSBA has told us that we've submitted a really good plan, and that the things that we're asking for are really valuable, but that one of their top criteria is enrollment pressure. And because Burlington High School was built for 2,000 students, and it now has under 1,000, that's never gonna be a top criteria. So, I know that Mr. Kuna has improved the application over the 13 years. Well, you haven't been there the whole time, there was someone else writing the application at the beginning, and we've improved the application, but the issue is not that we're not writing our proposals correctly. And I've heard that sort of mentioned in the community. So, I just want to say that it's not about how well we're writing proposals, that we haven't been able to get it. In fact, we got into the second round twice, I think, and they kept saying, you know, yes, you need new science labs, yes, your HVAC system still runs on floppy disks, and it's, you know, if it fails, you can't just replace it. So, I do want to address that. And the third thing I wanted to say is that, here it is 13th try, and actually, the reason we applied for the Fox Hill school is because when the 10-year master plan got done, they said that the Fox Hill school was the second top priority. So, because we weren't expecting to get the state to help us with the high school, we thought we'd try to get the state to help us with Fox Hill. And we were successful, fortunately, with that. So, we're moving forward to that. But what I regret is that we did wait too long to start moving forward with the renovation or replacement of the high school, because it is needed. It's, it's needed in so many different ways, and I'm really pleased that, yes, it's good for us to keep applying to the state, because it's a lot of money, and the town, you know, is, if, if we don't get the state to help us, the town would have to pay for the entire project, which is a lot of money. And that's why we didn't move forward without the state. But we, we are gonna, we do need to go forward, and we've all agreed, we need to move forward with this, the high school renovation or replacement. And I'm really pleased that we are, I'm really pleased that we put forward a warrant to town meeting. I hope that town meeting will be in support of that, just as they've been so supportive of so many other projects of ours, and we'll work together to, to figure out how to make it work. But I just wanted to give a little bit of background as we apply for the 13th time. The issue isn't how many times can we apply to the state, but how can we successfully renovate or replace the high school, because it needs it? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Simon. Are we ready to move on to the budget session?
Yes, ma'am. And again, this is largely informational, so I'll go through the light items for you that are mentioned in, in the budget. Again, Mr. Moore, and we'll be looking at everything holistically as, as we sort of look at the entire budget. But the four items that we're looking at this evening are the in-service curriculum budget line, so that is line 41, and that's page 34 through 36 in your, in your, in your budget book. Again, there's an increase of 40% or $135,000, and the increases are largely driven by the following four things. Professional development for both the elementary and middle school, and keys to literacy. I think you've been presented as to what keys to literacy is. That's an ongoing sort of district-wide, sort of common platform for learning comprehension and, and writing. So, that's one increase. We have two mental health programs, Cartwheel Care, which provides mental health in, I believe, different languages for students, and also the Interface with William James. That is the community partnership that we have put in place, that anyone resident of Burlington, as well as the school district, can seek out mental health support, and the interface group will connect the family, the resident, to those services for them. So, I think the committee is aware, and that is half the cost. We split that cost with the, with the town, Mr. Moore, so. And then, Dr. Purchase, when she came, talked about the middle school math, they're needing to do some updating there, and so there's 24,000, basically a $25,000 increase for ideas math at the, at the middle school. So, again, there's 9,000 for the interface, 50,000 for the cartwheel care, and $31,000 for professional development, and that is the reason for the 40% increase in that line item. May I move on?
Actually, I think Mr. Moore has a question.
Just a quick question. Which department in the, on the town side does, shares the cost with the interfaces? Is that like youth and family services?
Yes.
Or, it is?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
And so, any other questions?
Can I just ask? So, this is, like, iReady is my example, but is that professional, that's the training for iReady, or that's the iReady subscription to administer the test?
I'm not, I think the, the ideas math, I'm not, is, are you looking at a different line there? Is it the iReady math is, is what you're looking at?
It's iReady K through eight. It's a, iReady is like the English, I think.
We use it for literacy in elementary school, and we use it for both math and literacy at the middle school.
Okay, so, this is just paying for a subscription to that, access that test?
Yes, there's a per-pupil cost for that assessment.
Okay. I'm just trying to figure out why it's in the in-service training budget.
We can get you that answer.
Oh, okay.
I don't, I don't know that.
Okay.
So.
Okay. Are we ready to go to the educational supplies assessment?
I am, so.
I am ready too.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, this line is level funded, that's line 48. It's, again, it's page 87 and 88. It's $347,340. And, and again, this is the line that is payment of our Apple lease, and so our lease is basically, it's a, it's a three-year lease that we continue to roll over, so that's just a lease payment, and so that's staying the same. And then, may I move on?
We can go on to the question.
Yeah.
Ms. Masardo?
Does this, this does not include insurance on the iPads, right?
No, insurance is provided by families.
Okay, but not at the elementary school?
Not at the elementary school. I believe we have replacements for, because the iPads don't go home.
Okay. I got asked if we could think about budgeting for insurance at the middle school level, because I think there's some, between the financial hardship and the fact that parents feel like they can't opt out of an iPad if they think their sixth grader might destroy it.
I think we can set up, we can certainly talk about it. I think that it is something that we may want to support for certain families if needed. I also think there are some families that can just expand some of their current insurance to include a school iPad as well, so there are very different options for that, but we, maybe we should go back and revisit that conversation. We looked at many options, and again, I haven't looked at the cost for a long time, but I believe it was something like 15 to $30 for the, for the year. So, again, we can certainly provide support for families who, who need that. But I will do a better summary of the iPad insurance options. Again, but the, this funding is just as part of our three-year lease for the, for the iPads, and we continue to roll the lease, and we replace about 1,000 iPads every year, and we typically get four years of use out of them, and then we allow students in year four, we continue to use those devices, or students can purchase that device and take it, and take it with them. So, the technology changes, so we try to keep everything updated. Sustainability is something that's important. So, with that, line 61, page 151, I'm sorry, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yes, Mr. Moore?
I just want to confirm, that's the one-to-one program, correct?
Yes, sir.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you. And did you want to move on to custodial supplies?
Yes, ma'am. So, again, level funded at $155,000, that's page 151. I'm sure Bob can answer any specific questions about what supplies that we are purchasing.
Anyone have questions on that? I think it's pretty self-explanatory. Ms. Simon?
Comment, you know, thank you for making it work with a 0% increase with everything going up.
That's, yeah.
And that goes for other departments as well.
Yes.
And then, the, the school committee line slash superintendent is page 157, again, line 63. And so, that is an increase of 6%, or $18,500, and that increase is due to our legal costs have gone up, the hourly billable rate has increased, and then we also cover the postage district-wide for, and first-class mail has also increased. So, that covers the increases in mail and in legal fees.
Thank you. Any questions from anyone on that? Okay. The next, oh, yeah, Mr. Moore.
Sorry. How many billable hours do you typically go through a year?
Mr. Moore, I think I can get you a summary. It really depends if it's a contract year or a non-contract year. So, next year will be a, a contract year. So, I would assume we are planning for more hours, but I can get you a summary over the last few years.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. I think the next one item is adjournment.
Madam Chair, just before we adjourn, I just have one question. Typically, we are the second and fourth Tuesday of the month. In April, I have, Bob, we have, we said we had two meetings, we had one on April, was it April 4th?
Yep.
April 4th and 25th, so I just wanted to point out that that is different, and So I just wanted to point out that that is different, and is, I think we made that change because of Passover. Is that, I just want to make sure that I am stating that accurately.
It's my understanding--
Yes.
--that we considered making it on April 4th and 25th, but that we decided not to because it was, it was not an issue on the 4th. But if that's when it's posted, then that's when we'll have it.
Well, I also have a meeting booked on the 11th, which was a budget.
A budget meeting.
The public hearing.
So we have meetings scheduled for the 4th, 11th, and the 28th.
20--
Yeah, sorry.
Okay.
Okay.
Right.
Looks like we need them.
So the 11th is actually, that's our public hearing on the budget.
I also had written down that the meeting was the 11th.
Yeah, it was.
I think that's our public hearing on the budget is the 11th.
Yes.
And then, Mr. Morin, we're in front of Ways and Means on the 12th.
I'm correct. And you were in front of us up to me an hour before per final vote.
So again, I just want to be, so I had, was a bit confused, but it sounds like we're going to have our regular meeting on the 4th, and then the 11th will be a budget hearing, and then we can, we'll, we should really make sure how we communicate that because of, we're sort of out of cycle.
Right. And can you send us an invitation for the other, the meetings, the other two meetings? Just so if we want to attend, we can. The one on the 11th, I mean, just if we want to attend that.
No, it's a budget meeting.
I know, but it's, I know, but it's not on the calendar. I don't have it on my calendar. I don't have an invite.
So can I, okay, through the chip, please.
Yes.
I think this is what we're trying to clarify. So I typically work with Mary Ann, and the week before the meeting, we'll send out a WebEx invitation and then put on the calendar for the meeting that's coming up. So no meeting invitations have gone out for the 4th yet. They'll be going out this Thursday or Friday. For the 11th, that was a memo sent out by Ms. Koshia in regards to the budget meetings that were extra. And then the 25th, same thing. Meeting invitation has not gone out yet.
It starts on the 5th.
And will go the week of the 18th, or the 15th, I'm sorry.
A little long conversation. Madam Chair?
Yes, Ms. Simon?
So I just want to say that it was my understanding, this is fine, we'll have a regular meeting on the 4th, but that since I've been on the school committee, we've had our budget public hearing in the middle of a regularly scheduled business meeting for the school committee.
Yeah.
So we had decided that we would have our school committee meeting on the 11th, and at that school committee meeting, we would have a budget public hearing. So if we need to schedule, if what you're saying is we need an extra school committee meeting, and it's on the 4th, then that's fine. But I just wanted to clarify that having a budget public hearing on the 11th is not, does not preclude doing other business and has never meant that. So we've always had time for a business meeting. So I want to be really clear. And Passover does start on the night of April 5th, so on the 4th, it's not the night, it's the day before, so it shouldn't be a big problem for people. And that's why we left it on the 11th, so.
Okay. Is that clear now?
Yep.
All right, good.
That's why I asked.
I don't think we adjourn. It's time, right?
Yes, it's time for adjournment.
I'm not the only one who didn't know we had a meeting on the 4th.
Well, I knew we had a meeting on the 4th, I just didn't have the 11th in my calendar yet.
I knew, I didn't know why, but I did know.
That's why I asked. Again, I had three meetings, I just wanted to clarify, so thank you.
Okay, so adjournment?
I second the motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'm in favor. There's no one opposed, so it's 5-0-0, we're adjourned.